I mean to order and ask you all to stand with me and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the portion of our meeting reserved for public comments. If anyone wants to approach the board publicly tonight, now's the time to do it. If you would like to just raise your hand and step up to the mic. Yes, sir. Just identify yourself, please, and just speak into the mic for the cameras.
My name is Jeremy Lerman. I don't know where the camera is. Sorry.
Oh, you just.
I don't know where the camera is. I'm here tonight. I'm probably about a seven-year resident of Grafton. My daughter was born here. We started her, tried to start her, and started her in 3K at St. Paul's because Grafton didn't offer a 3K program. Went to enroll her last July in 4K and found out that in order to get her into the 4K program last year, we would have needed to have enrolled her in January, something my wife and I were unaware of. So, we rolled her over in St. Paul's program into the 4K program. Was on the ball this year once we understood how, being new parents, how everything worked. Right away, first day of enrollment for kindergarten, went ahead and enrolled her. We live three blocks from Woodview. Told her Woodview is the school she's going to go to, signed her up for summer school so that she would get accustomed to the school. She's already very apprehensive about going to school. Her friends are going to Woodview. She has family who goes to Woodview. I called today once, excuse me, Friday, I got a letter from the school district stating that my daughter is not going to Woodview, that she is instead going to Grafton Elementary for one year, and then proceeding to go back to Woodview. This is already a trying time for her, and I was told that we're one of eight families who should be going to Woodview who are going to Grafton Elementary. And I'm just trying to find out why. When I asked why today, they told me, well, because she doesn't have a sibling that already goes to Woodview. My question to that is, why should my daughter be penalized because my wife and I only decided to have one child? Secondly, I was told that basically it was, excuse me, it was a matter of, did she have any siblings that go to Woodview already? And, you know, I'm on the spot and I don't remember the second reason why. But I'm just trying to find out what's going on. I called today, talked to Suzanne Lilly. She recommended I call the superintendent. I called and left a message for the superintendent at approximately 11:00 AM this morning. Was told he was in a meeting, and once the meeting was done, I'd get a return phone call. I'm still waiting on that return phone call. I'm trying to find out what's going on. We got this letter Thursday. The offices are closed Friday. Here it is Monday. I'm trying to find out what's going on. My daughter, for the last couple of months, has been very apprehensive. She's finally starting to get into the idea, after summer school and everything, of being okay with going to Woodview. And now I have to go home and tell her that she's not going to Woodview, that a decision was made for whatever, and I get and I understand the reasoning why the school, the classroom sizes and everything else. I understand that. I mean, I moved up here for the better education, the betterment for my family, and since I've tried to get into the Grafton School District, it's been one roadblock after another, and I'm just trying to find out exactly what's going on.
Thanks. That, we have, I will direct it. That's Mr. Nelson. He's our superintendent. I'm sure you're on his list to call, and he'll answer those questions. So, this is probably not the venue to answer those specific questions, but it does reflect the notion that we have difficulties with crowded schools, and it means that some kids who are in one district end up going to another school. Yours is not the only example of people who are disappointed that they weren't able to get to the school that's in the backyard or around the corner, something like that. But there are legitimate reasons, and we do have some strategies for that, but I'll let Dr. or Mr. Nelson call you tomorrow, or you can, if you're going to hang around.
Well, I'd like to hear the, I'd like to hear the specific reasoning. No, I mean.
I can give you a general overview, and I'll be happy to follow up. So, I apologize that between 11:00 and 6:00, I wasn't able to call you, but we have more kindergarten students enrolling at Woodview next year than we have space for. And so, as we look at the fact that in two years, by the 18, 19 school year, we'll be down to two elementary schools, and those enrollment issues won't be a problem for us, we looked at, what are student, Kennedy currently has the smallest amount of students in the kindergarten class. And so, we looked at the option of either moving Kennedy students to Woodview and having three sections of kindergarten over at Woodview. We looked at moving some kids from Kennedy to GES, moving some kids from Woodview to GES, having three sections of kindergarten at GES. Or we looked to say, okay, what are students that, according to the maps, and we're going to look at actually three, because we just got a different one yesterday from Rightway, but looking at those maps, these students, where would they be going in the following year? And so, there's a group, a certain number of students that are currently attending GES that will be going to Kennedy the following year. So, we sent letters to them saying they would be going to Kennedy. We have other students that are currently going to be in Woodview's enrollment zone in the next 18, 19 school year, but we can send them to GES. When GES disbands, those students plus their, some of their classmates will also be going back to Woodview. And that allows us to have two sections of kindergarten at each level. So, it truly is based on our enrollment, and as you'll see later when we look at elementary enrollments, we currently have that now where people that are living right, right next to each other, one could be going to GES, one could be going to Kennedy, and one could be going to Woodview. And that's the idea of the referendum in our construction process, is having neighborhood schools, which will be addressed. And unfortunately, at the kindergarten area in Ken, in Woodview, we have too many students that are looking to join at that point. So, I can give you some more specifics tomorrow when I call you, but that's really where we are.
Okay, but that doesn't answer, I get and I understand the reasoning why, to a degree. I mean, I, nobody wants a large classroom. I get that.
You don't want 30, 30-some kids in the classroom.
You know, I mean, when I went, when I went to, when I went to school, I mean, my classes were 32, 34 kids in a classroom. I get that. I understand that. What I don't understand is, how is my daughter being, the criteria that you set, by my wife and I choosing not to have another child, now all of a sudden my daughter is penalized because she doesn't have an older sibling already going to Woodview? What difference does that make? How does an older brother or an older sister already attending a school, how does that affect, why does that affect her going to that school?
Because it would affect other class sizes as well. So, it would affect other grade levels. So, we tried saying, because if someone has a kindergartner in fourth grader, or someone could have a kindergartner coming in, and they could have a three-year-old behind them. That wasn't, that was really irrelevant, because in two years, this won't be considered a problem.
Okay, but then why is it, why was it a part of the criteria then? If you're telling me it's irrelevant, then why was it used as part of the criteria?
Because that's currently what we have in kindergarten now heading into Woodview. And so, we had to say, how can we get eight to 10 students to move from one school to another school so that we can even out our enrollments at the elementary schools in that grade level? We currently do that now. We've done that in the past, and this is what we're doing now at the kindergarten level so that it is a, you aren't having 32 kids in a classroom at, at Woodview and like 13 kids in a classroom at Kennedy. That's not, that's not what's best for all kids.
But you're not answering my question. My question is, why does an older sibling who already goes to Woodview have anything to do with the criteria on whether or not somebody coming into kindergarten gets to go to Woodview, or has to go to Kennedy, or has to go to Grafton Elementary?
Because it allows us to look to see, here's a, here's an objective rationale for us making a decision, and that was one of the criteria we used. I'll be happy to reach out to you tomorrow.
The rationale has less, nothing to do with penalizing a person who only has one kid.
Sure it does. If it's part of the criteria, it's penalizing.
The criteria is that some families.
My wife and I chose to have one child.
But right, but it's, it's nothing.
And now, now I'm finding out that I'm being penalized, more specifically, my daughter is being penalized because my wife and I made a conscious decision to bring one child into this world and not multiple. And because of that reason, my daughter is not going to the school that, since January, I've told her that she's going to.
It's actually not the reason, the reason that.
Then why are you telling people that?
The reason that's on the books is that some people who have an older sibling there, we want to keep families out of school. So, rather than having.
Okay, she's got cousins that go there. Family is family. Where do you draw the line for family?
It's a tough question. We struggled with that, honestly. It's not like we're happy that people have to be in the situation that you're in, but we had to make some kind of policies for that. And we have policies that were figured out and rationale was presented that said, well, this is the way we're going to do it. And unfortunately, it puts you in a position that you're in for a year, and, you know, it's one of those things.
It puts me in a position that I've been in for two years now.
Okay.
For two years. I moved my family up here. I'm a minority. My daughter is a minority. Now, I'm beginning to think that maybe it's not an issue of where I live, maybe it's an issue of the color of my skin. And I have to think that way, because this is the world we live in, you know? And now I have to wonder, is that possibly? Does that play a role in it? I was told she can't go to 4K for Grafton, so I had to fork out tuition money to get her into a 4K program. Luckily, St. Paul's, boom, done and over with. Tried getting her into kindergarten, and now I'm being told that, yeah, we can get her into kindergarten, but not here. We're going to send her across town. That's ridiculous.
Understood. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to maybe talk with Mr. Nelson tomorrow, because these are questions that, you know, we really aren't prepared to, and it's not on the agenda for us to talk about tonight, but it's a legitimate.
I'm sorry. Number three on the agenda is public comment.
Yeah.
I'm commenting on it.
Right, and we are, we're happy to accept.
I'm well within my right to comment on.
You are well within your right to comment, but we aren't prepared to have the discussion about that, especially since.
You should have been prepared to have the discussion about it, because there were 22, from what I was told, there are 22 families that were told their kids aren't going to the school that they were figuring on going to. Like I said, we set up, we did everything by the book this year to make sure we got everything in on time. School shopping, school supply shopping is done. Have you looked at the school supply shopping difference between Woodview and Grafton Elementary? I dropped $200 on school supplies that now my daughter no longer needs, because the school supply requirement, same class, is different.
Yeah, I can't comment on that. Didn't do the research on it, and it's not on our agenda to talk about.
But it should have been. You knew that these letters were going out, these letters were going out last week. This is the first meeting after the, those letters went out.
And we can have the discussion. We just can't have the discussion now. But I do, Mr. Nelson, we'll talk with you, and we can pursue it. And if it's something that the board needs to address again, we will address it again. We just can't address it now. But you're well within your rights to make the comment. We hear that, we hear it, we understand you're frustrated, and.
I don't think you do understand my frustration. This is two years in the making of frustration. This is not just me getting up and going to the mailbox and getting a letter and saying, oh, hey, by the way, your daughter is going to Grafton Elementary as opposed to Woodview.
But all we can do tonight is hear your complaint, and we get it. We understand that you have the complaint. We will pursue it. Mr. Nelson will do that, and if it is something that needs to come back to the board, we will, and you can be involved in that, but he'll have to talk with you tomorrow.
I think I'll be involved in it, and I'm going to contact a lawyer, because this is ridiculous.
Understood.
Because all I'm asking is my daughter to go to one school, well within my rights.
Understood. It's frustrating.
And now I'm being told, for a second year in a row, my daughter cannot attend Woodview Elementary.
Understood. We'll, we'll pursue it. Trust me, we will pursue it. But you and Mr. Nelson will have to pursue it tomorrow. We have to move on with the meeting tonight. But thanks for the comment. We, we're glad you brought it up. Any other public comment tonight? Yes.
Short. Sorry.
You're okay. Just get close. It's good.
Jessica Petrie. I want to just comment on the boundary situation in schools. And I know I had to leave early at the last meeting, so I'm not certain where things were left, but one of the comments that was made last time was kind of about having the luxury of time, because we don't have to make these decisions, doesn't affect this school year, it affects next school year for our kids. And I just want to kind of throw it out there for families who are in kind of my family's situation, where we have kids coming into K-5, and similar, actually, to the gentleman who just went, but because these kids are coming in and they will have a transition from wherever they were before, daycare, preschool, home, and starting a school, to then possibly have to change again. That's a big deal when you're five and six. So, I don't necessarily agree with or think we have the luxury of time, because some of these decisions, I think, need to be made sooner than later so that then families can make the decisions they need to make. I don't know that I want my son starting Kennedy if we're not going to be at Kennedy next year. So, that's all.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, the approval of the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from the June 22nd and July 10th meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry. In the payment of the bills.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Move on to our action items. Mr. Nelson, you have some congratulations to give.
Yes, so as the high school ended their spring and seasons, we wanted to share some of the different recognitions that students received. So, we talked about Amanda Parsons being recognized as softball conference player of the year and first-team North Shore, but she was also recognized as second-team All-State, so a senior. So, congratulations to her. Girls' soccer was regional champions for the eighth consecutive year. They had a number of students receive some individual medals recognition with Haley Block, honorable mention, All-State, first-team North Shore Conference. Abby Gutnick, second-team North Shore Conference. Abby Shad, Jaden Addy, Malaya Spurver, and Corbin Wisner was honorable mention, North Shore. Golf, the team was honorable mention, academic All-State. So, congratulations to the team on that academic recognition. And then also, individually, Matty Wimmer was a sectional qualifier. Ryan Starchki and Jake Peterson were all North Shore Conference, and Jaden Pollak was High Honors Academic All-State. And the boys and girls track and field qualifiers, Ryan Melodic was 400-meter dash, finished 10th place overall, and Casey Garza in the shot put finished 22nd overall, and Diskus finished 18th overall. Also, although we don't have it as a school sanctioned sport at this time, Grafton High School players do earn varsity letters in lacrosse, Lozaki Lacrosse, and Joe Birch as a freshman, and Dawson Lewis as a senior, were all-conference honorable mention. And so, Kevin Ringold, I actually read the agenda, and it shot me an email on Friday or Saturday asking to recognize those students. So, congratulations to all those students and their teams on a great year, but we wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. And we'd also, I'd spoken with Dr. Ziegler. We had a group of students go to Germany on a, on a trip over the summer, and unfortunately, Fruff Rye was not able to be here tonight. So, at our next board meeting, we're going to have her and a couple of students come and do like a five, 10-minute presentation of their experience in Germany and what they saw, maybe start like an annual or a sort of a practice. If someone travels abroad, to have them come and present to the board, you approve their, their trips. So, it'd be nice to sort of see what they experienced and the international experience that they had. So, that's, Mr. Manti has worked with her, and that'll be on the next agenda as an item for that. And then we have July 1st state aid. This has come out, so I've asked Topher to give us just a brief update. We know there's a lot of moving pieces still, but at least give an update on that.
Sure, so our state aid estimate for July 1st came out. It was about $885,000 less than the previous year. That's a 13.4% reduction. Last year, our state aid was of the amount of $6.6 million. Right now, our state aid estimate is a little above 5.70. Two big factors that go into that would be our drop in membership. So, it's a one-year snapshot of our membership from 2016, '17. It takes the September and January membership, averages that out, and then it adds summer, and it adds school choice membership. That went from 2081 down to 2062. The other piece is our equalized value. That increased, as you recall, last fall, 5.4%, which was much more than what the state experienced. I think that was about an average of 2.5% around the state. So, our value per member increased from 732,000 per member up to about 780,000 per member. That's an increase of almost $47,000 per member. State average property value per member went up about $15,000. So, we were more than three times the increase of the state average. That, of course, makes us more property wealthy per member. And so, in that formula, right now with that estimate, we've lost $885,000. The piece that's missing right now is how did our, how did the fiscal year end for 2016, '17? What they use essentially is everybody's budget for the past year to estimate what your shared cost is. Ultimately, as we have in years past, our shared cost should be lower than what the budget is, by hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, on October 15th, they will have that final financial information. And in 16, '17, so last year's state aid increased almost $120,000 from the July 1st to the October 15th state aid, the actual certification of state aid on the 15th. In 15, '16, the estimate on July 1st was over $200,000 lower than the final aid that came out on October 15th. So, when they, we come out and find out October 15th what that state aid is, they'll take into account how our budget came out. That'll be factored in with all the budgets around the state and how they actually turned out, and we'll get a new, a new state aid number, most likely that will be higher.
Okay. Any questions for Topher?
Either way, though, but still, we're looking at a half million dollars?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Nelson, the beginning of the school year details.
Yes, so we, we had our administrative retreat last week, where we took half-day on Wednesday, we took Wednesday afternoon, all-day Thursday, and then half-day on Friday, brought our administrative team together. We looked back at some data points from last year. We started off with a short video from Simon Sinek about starting with why, and we'll be doing a book study this, this year over the next three months. There's six chapters. We're going to read a chapter every time we meet. We meet twice a month. So, it's how great leaders inspire everyone to take action. At our board workshop, we'd seen that 18-minute TED Talk, and we showed that same TED Talk for, for our whole administrative team, and then had some discussions in small groups. And we're following up with a, with a book read as, as we move forward in the next couple of months. And it's really talking about, you know, starting with the why. And a lot of times we focus on that what and on the how, but it's really focusing on why are we doing things? And that's really the essential piece for us to focus on as leaders. So, so we had a good three days of looking at data from last year, looking ahead to this year. We know this year's going to be a year of transition as we look at, looking forward to the 18, 19 school year, and teachers, and students, and families, and staff, and all those pieces. And so, we had great discussions about that. Thursday night, we had a dinner at our house for staff as well as their spouses, significant others, and their children. And luckily, it didn't rain. I think we had 13 kids under the age of 12, and so luckily, it was, they were able to be outside. But we had a great time of relationship building as well as focusing on what was critical from last year, looking at it this year. We looked at our PD schedule, making sure what our goals are are aligned with professional development that we've already set out for the year. So, you know, that's, I know that's been a question from staff, what is happening on each day? And we went through each day of our PD for the following year. Diana's laid that out very nicely for us, and so we're aligning, make sure our goals are aligned to professional development that we're doing. So, as we ended our time together, we talked about the number of days that are left until school starts. So, from today, there are 15 days, and from now, we have our second annual district registration. So, everyone will be in the gym on August 8th and 9th, and that was a success last year. That process started before I got here, and they've revised it and made it even better, I think, for this year. But so, looking forward to district registration occurring on the 8th and the 9th. And then 22 days from now, we'll have our, our new teacher orientation. So, with school starting earlier, everything's getting backed up a week. So, on August 16th and 17th, we have new teachers. At our last meeting, we talked about Canvas and the implementation of Canvas. You and you heard Diana talk about, along with Rick and Jennifer, the online portion of Canvas for new staff. So, they're working on getting to know our school and our district even before they start on the 16th, but that's the 16th and 17th. And then we have 27 days from now, and everyone is back on the 21st. So, just as we did last year, we'll have a district welcome back, or having all support staff, all teachers there. That's when we had the welcome. Dr. Ziegler spoke on behalf of the board. Hopefully, that'll fit in your calendar again at 8 o'clock. We'll recognize years of service for, for staff as well, just as we did last year. And so, we're excited to have everyone back in the building. And then the first day of school is 35 days from now. So, we are, we're moving quickly to, to be the first day of school, but a lot of details, a lot of planning going into that, and we're excited for that to happen. So, we would ask that you would keep August 14th available for a potential board meeting. That's, that's our curriculum. That's our typical curriculum night, and I don't believe we're going to have a curriculum meeting set up for that night, but we may need a quorum of the board available for approving teacher contracts if there's any resignations that occur. So, there may be a need for a short meeting on that night. But just keeping that in mind, right now, we're doing well with hires and resignations and so forth. But a lot can change between now and the next couple of weeks for that. So, so those are some of the new details as we get ready for the 17, 18 school year.
Registration is the 9th and 10th.
No, I put it on my calendar.
It's recorded. I want to make sure that it's.
Thank you. 9th and 10th. August 9th and 10th. Thank you. So, it's actually 16 days. You actually have another day. There aren't many days. There's a lot. It's coming quickly.
That's great. That's early. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? So, the policy and the curriculum committees met since our last meeting. The policy committee will report first. Are you going to report, Mr. Nelson, or a chairman is going to report?
I can report out really quick.
Yeah.
So, our policy committee met on July 10th, and we took a second look at the policy for 46.1 on student search activities, and we're actually going to approve it. It's item K on the agenda tonight, so I'm not going to go into details, because I can do that when we get to K, if that's okay with you, Jeff?
Yes, please.
Okay. And our next policy committee meeting will be in September, and the date is TBD. We haven't set a date yet, but it will be in September.
Possibly that September 11th.
Any questions for Julia? The curriculum committee met. Diana, are you going to report, or?
The curriculum committee met on July 10th. We went over the new learning management system that Jeff has brought up, Canvas. Diana demonstrated how it works, gave a timeline for implementation. It'll be fully implemented in the next two years. It was chosen because it's a secure site. It unifies what the teachers put on the web and what's actually happening in the classroom. And it allows information from all of the teachers to be unified throughout, so there's not differing from teacher to teacher. And right now, it's been implemented, as Jeff said, in three different classes over the summer, from a PE class to the new mentor and new teacher classes. We also covered the role of instructional coaches. Diana provided handouts, which are available on the web for anyone. It goes over the priorities for the year for the instructional coaches, as well as the continuing education the instructional coaches will be doing. And then we went over future agenda items for September, and I would encourage any board member who has extra items to go ahead and let Diana and Jeff know if there's any items you would like to see as the next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for September 11th. Is Diana available? Okay. Any questions?
Okay, thanks. Diana, anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Diana, anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Um, all right, so I lost my agenda here.
We're onto personnel.
Okay, you have a personnel report. I'm looking for the report, and I checked out my agenda.
So we would recommend that the board approve the hiring of Pat Knowski, a 4th grade teacher at Woodview Elementary School. And then informational for our new hires is Judy Ristic as a special ed aide at Kennedy Elementary, and Alyssa Brownlee will be a special education aide at Kennedy Elementary. We would look for recommendations for hiring Pat Knowski.
I'll read that motion.
A second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. So we do have a discussion on the elementary school attendance areas. Jeff?
Yes, we've had a couple of discussions, um, already about the elementary school boundaries. Um, we've shared multiple proposals. We started with our original, um, what it looks like now with our boundary map. Um, we had, um, option B. We've had option C. We saw option C last time. Um, in the board packet, I think it's C and D. And, um, if you, if you've looked in the last hour, you probably saw E. Um, there's, so, um, Right Way is here in attendance as well, Colleen, and our new, um, Jeff, Jeff, tell me what your official title is?
Terminal manager.
Thank you. Terminal manager, thank you. And our new terminal manager, um, is Jeff, and we had a meet and greet today, Topher and I did, with Colleen and Jeff. Um, we talked about option E. So, um, what we thought we'd do is we would, um, sort of show option, um, yeah, so a reminder that the board unanimously agreed option B was off the table. So option B was off the table, so we've moved on to option C. So if we can show option C.
What do you want the map?
Um, yeah, I, I, well, you cover this right here, I guess. Can you give us just a little bit more over, so I can see the numbers? So option C, it's hard for you guys to see here. Option C, you can see in option C, and we saw this last time, that at Kennedy, isn't that Kennedy? I mean, that's Kennedy. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, sir. Kennedy was 455, Woodview was 450, the out is the open enrollment students. So you can see it's broken up by grade level, but right now, they aren't assigned to a different, uh, any school, um, at all. It's just 455 and 450. And option D, it's broken out, and there's 458 at Kennedy, and there's 447, um, at Woodview. So if we were to look at the map, so the, the map would be option C, there will be a review. We saw option C last time. So option C, you can, you can, you can see, you can see that we, um, have, you've kept, um, coming down and then directly over and down, and taking this area here, um, for, for Kennedy, so blue is Kennedy, and the orange is Woodview. The other dots are colors that are, um, those are open enrollment students, um, that are, that are in that mix. So we've seen option C. Hey, Doc. Uh, we've seen option C before. Here's Kennedy here, here's Woodview here. Okay? The question that we were asked last time is, can we look at this area here that's heavily populated, and could that group be going to Woodview? What would that do to our numbers? Okay? So then, looking at option D. So we look at option D, you can see that, um, if you come back, can you come back to option C? I'm sorry. So option C came, on watch, it came down and over, and now option D is gonna keep that going all the way over on Uleao, and you're gonna come, you're gonna come over and then down here. So option D will show that. So now it's a, almost a square, um, that would go with that, and you have a, a group here that's being sent up to, to Woodview. Um, and then this area up here is still staying the same, and Kennedy, this group still is becoming Kennedy here. That's basically the biggest, that's the only change in option D. Okay? If you go to option E, can you give me the numbers for option E? Okay, so in option E, so option E is a, um, this is if they were starting with a blank slate, and what they basically did is, Right Way looked to see, okay, if this is, that was one of the things that came up with last board meeting, is we hadn't heard that before. What if it was a blank slate? You know, you're trying to, uh, if we were starting with a blank slate, it didn't matter who's being moved or not being moved, what would that look like? So what they did is they used the river as a, basically a boundary line, right, Colleen? Um, and maybe we can see the map, and it'll make, maybe it'll make sense. So they basically used the, the river. It's like a winding, they didn't go here because then, like, here's Kennedy right here, so if they'd used the river, you'd have actually kids right next to Kennedy, not going to Kennedy, 'cause Kennedy's on the other side of the river. So, but they, so they brought it to here, and then they followed up the river and brought it all the way back down. So students on this side of the river would be going to Kennedy, people on this side, besides this group right here, would be going to Woodview. Okay? And you go back up, and, and, so starting with a blank slate, when we look at that, though, with what our students currently have, we would be looking at 477 students at Kennedy and 428 students at Woodview. Carrie?
Oh, I was just noticing, though, if you take out the certain 4th and 5th graders who won't be attending those schools, the numbers go to 330, 323, much more equal. 'Cause the current 4th and 5th graders will be attending John Long by the time of the 2018, 18 school year.
Correct. But we don't know, what we don't know is, we don't know what the pre-K.
Right.
Where those kids are at, and we don't know what the kindergarten kids would be like for that year. So it's, so that's why we took our current students, 'cause we think, we believe that, like, looking at the, the more grade levels and the more students we can look at, the better grasp and overview we're gonna see long-term, um, statistically, to make it as statistically accurate as possible, um, for that. So although if that's true, will that be true when we add those other students? And we won't know that until our, that, our September board meeting.
Right.
Which is, we're going to what your comment was of waiting. So, so that would be a concern with that. So that's why we haven't done that. See, even with the other ones we've taken, we haven't taken students out, because we don't know who to replace them with and where they're, where they're attending. Um, so if you, so, so that, that gives us option E, um, looking at it in that way. One of the pieces that was asked for, can you just keep scrolling down? I think bus ridership was one of the questions that was asked, and Colleen got this from me. Um, looking at this, we can see that, um, students that ride, um, and it's broken up by, by school, um, it'll show, and this is our elementary students only. So we can see that at each grade level, the number of students that ride versus those that don't ride. Um, so you can see it's almost, um, it's a little 50% of riders versus non-writers at each grade level, um, across our elementaries. That was a question that Mark did ask, if it was, Joe, it wasn't Mark, Joe. I didn't know someone asked that. Um, I think we asked it again last time. Maybe you asked me again last time. They went with that. So we, we'd asked for that data, and they were able to pull that data for that. Is there something else?
Yes.
Oh, good. So then we looked at the, the routing for option C. So, you know, one of the questions that Boardman reached out to me asking about was, is there a, um, the, the cost? Is there a difference in cost, um, with the different options? And, and they all are, are still, 'cause we have the same number of students, they're still recommending that we have, um, 13 routes. That's what we started with, the 13 routes. So the cost is the same, no matter what the, no matter which option it is. As we met today and discussed, you know, as we develop, as this become finalized, and we look at the number of students that are riding and all those pieces, could we have a potential for, for saving money? Yes, but it's better to start saying, well, here's what, this is worst-case scenario, and so we're budgeting accurately for that. So you can see that in option C, which we saw last time, it would be, um, for Kennedy, looking at that, it's an average of 21 minutes. So if we add all those things together, it's an average of 21 minutes. And then at Woodview, it's an average of 33 minutes. So that was option C. If we scroll down to option D. So option D, looking at Kennedy, so we haven't seen this yet. So this is a new piece here. Looking at this, you go to 23 minutes to Kennedy, and at Woodview, you look at 28 minutes. So you don't have any routes that are in the 40s, um, but the, um, overall, it's gone up at Kennedy, and it's come down at Woodview in option B. And then option E, it shows seven routes at Kennedy, and, and, so if you add seven and five, it only equals 12, and I just said we're doing 13. But that's because we would probably, we need to add a different route, 'cause this, this becomes 55 minutes, 50 minutes, 45, 45. These become really big routes. So that's an average of 39 minutes per route, and then down here, it's 32 minutes per route. So, um, E, um, E has some, some shortcomings, um, just inherent in, in just the amount of space that there is, trying to get to schools. But you haven't seen D or E yet, so we wanted to, we should, so then, we just got, the reason why E wasn't in the back of us, 'cause we just got it, so we were working on that today with Rick, like, going through, trying to get, um, bless you, um, on the map and everything else, what that looked like, getting the number of students for you to go look at E, so you at least see that tonight.
Okay? So we've seen C, D, and E. We can go back to any of them and take questions, comments?
So on option E, how many total households or students are, would not be going to their home school compared to today?
So in option E, we would have, so I can give you that for all of them, 'cause Rick ran that for us, 'cause that was asked, and so we have that data for you. So in option E, there would be students who currently attend Woodview that would now be going to Kennedy. There'd be 37 students for 20, 26 families.
Family.
37 students, 26 families. And at, students that are at Kennedy, that would now be going to Woodview. In option E, there'd be 134 students and 99 families. So that's in option E. I'm looking at option D. Wow. It's really, sorry, I got, my mouse is really sensitive here. In option D, we would have students who currently would attend, that are attending Woodview that would now be going to Kennedy. There'd be 22 students or 15 families at Kennedy that would now be going to Woodview. There would be 88 students or 65 families. Not or, it's 88, 88 students, but 65 families, making up those 88. And in option C, from Woodview, that would now be going to Kennedy, there'd be 21 students, which equals 14 families. And going from Kennedy to Woodview would be 38 students, which is 26 families.
Jeff, is that including students that don't currently take the bus?
Rick, that would be, that would be correct. I, she, her question is, is that students who don't currently take the bus? That would just be any student at all.
Any student.
Any student at all that's built in that way. So busing is not part of it. It would just be, this is how many students currently attend here that would now be going to a different school, one way or the other. And obviously, you know, so those numbers may sound high, but we realize that all of GES is having to be moved, no matter what grade level they're starting next year.
So I know you, we, I mentioned this at the last meeting. The village, in their 2016 master plan, that they adopted in October of 16, has, has created these maps. I think we should overlay these maps on these maps, because this map actually shows, you know, future planned neighborhoods, um, throughout the entirety of the village, and I suspect we could get that for the town, although I would suspect the town still remains, um, large developments with not so many, uh...
That's probably the closest we have.
That's the closest that we have, that's the closest we have to the town. Is that one? It shows all their, that shows all their lots.
Okay.
And the, the, and looking at that, the plan that they have, the, I guess the, you know, I was looking at that earlier, I'm gonna come back to that. What is the year, fall 2035?
Uh, 2020. The title of this thing is, the comprehen, amendment to the comprehensive plan for 2035 that was adopted in October of 16, October 17.
So, and we did, we did take a look at that. The, the issue is, is that looking ahead 20 years is the, the piece of looking at what is, what is currently out there, what is, what are lots that are available, what potentially could be developed, what the village's like to be developed, um, is a very hard piece to be forecasting that far, which is why we discussed, like, this really should be, every three years, having a discussion, is, is development taking off? Just because lots are available, or someone would like to see it be developed, they may or not be being sold, and they may or may not, depending on the economy, all those pieces. So it probably is a review of, is this working every, every three years, every three or five years, whatever the board would like to do, to have that discussion with them.
No, I, I don't disagree with that, and I think that's the prudent thing to do. But is there a way to just lay this map over the village's map, so you can at least see within these boxes, whether it's Woodview and Kennedy, whether there's a disproportionate amount of developable land in one area, particularly in the village, not so much in the town, versus another area? That might cause you to lean either to an east-west split or a north-south split.
I think part of the challenge of that, Paul, though, is some of the village planning area actually covers the town, but that land would need to be annexed by the village to be developed. So it would actually change what could be a larger town lot into a smaller village lot, and that's really hard to predict, because the landowners are the ones that generally make that decision when they wanna annex.
Right. But the comprehensive plan, at least as it's contemplated today, would, and that map, at least as it's contemplated today, would at least reflect that. So all I'm asking is just to superimpose one over the other. I, I'm not a software guy, but I would think that it might be doable.
Yeah, 'cause I looked at that too, Paul, and I think if you look at what already is in the village, kinda south of Falls Road, west of Port Road, that's already village.
Right.
And that's, I mean, we, there are some homes going up in that area already. And I think the density of those homes are gonna be much greater than, say, east of 43. So that's, you know, that's why I had asked about school capacity at Kennedy and Woodview, 'cause what is our current capacity after the, after the construction's done?
So at 100% capacity, it's, Woodview's 552 and Kennedy's 509.
One more time?
That's okay. 100%, 'cause I just got this today, so, uh, with, with, 100% capacity, Woodview is 552, Kennedy is 509.
And currently, we've got them at where? Roughly 4?
460.
460.
Um, Carrie, can you pull that? You should pull that, I don't have that. Look at the, that, the Google Doc will show that.
Sorry.
Whatever it's CP, whatever it is. I didn't think that one, I had the numbers for certain levels. Yep. Yep, so we're, so in option C, it's 455 and 450, and option D, it's 458 and 447. Kennedy's first. So 455 at Kennedy, 450 at Woodview, option D, 458 at Kennedy, and 447 at Woodview.
And at the end of the day, the village, in their plan, they have, uh, population projections out to 2040, an increase of 1,300 of the village. So, so not significant growth over the next 30 years, 20 years, whatever that is.
Well, and you're, and you're including, like, lumberyard apartments in that, that isn't, even the pieces that would go with that are more than likely not resulting in school-aged children in, in that development there. And as you saw, we tried including what the village and the town had on the one that Carrie showed, um, that had some of those lot pieces, and it does vary depending on plus or minus how, how big, they just know there's land. How many lots will it be? That hasn't been determined yet, we just know there's land. So when we look at, it would appear that, looking at that map there, if option E, if we're looking at option E, then it creates just a ton of, of extra, all the extra pieces are in Kennedy's.
Right. An east-west split.
Right. An east-west split. Correct.
That's where I think that's a problem.
Yeah, with it, so that's why, but, but you asked us to say, like, like, what's a, what's a clean slate? And so, you know, you pick something as a logic thing, so it makes sense the right way to say, well, the river, let's just keep people on one side or the other. Um, so you do that, but looking at, and maybe based on busing, it is an equal representation, but based on kids who, who total, um, it isn't an equal representation. So it seems like option E would be one that, that probably would be one that would, sort of like option B that we looked at, and we're like, yeah, we don't, it doesn't make sense. You know, we would say option E is probably one that would go by the wayside, and we'd look at C and D.
Now, this map in the village shows a fairly large planned neighborhood that is mostly in the town, in the northwest corner behind Green Valley Road.
And Mayfair Road, yep.
And again, that's, that's, I'm assuming, the way this is laid out, that's currently town land, but the village must have some idea that at some point it may annex that land, therefore, they put it in their 2035 comprehensive. Um, and that development actually is, is bigger than, or it's approximately the same size as the one in the southeast corner, but it'd be along Port Road, west of the freeway.
Yep, I can see that.
So, I mean, to me, there, it further supports why E just doesn't make any sense to me.
Yep. We agree with that.
And, and from the way I look at it, why even that carve-out on the, the First Avenue?
D.
In D, doesn't make sense either.
If you can pull that, please. Let's see. Can you bring that any closer?
Yeah. I have one more.[1765.12]
I think it kind of depends on how many years we want to review it at, because Shady Lane just has 20 new lots coming in, and that would be a Woodview neighborhood.
Sure.
And if we just go with lots that are actually on the, you know, like, on the market or at least approved, not in the future, I mean, because in the future, it's always harder to predict, and I think it's going to be almost impossible for the board to come up with something that we can guarantee you are not going to need to switch these boundaries at all for even 10 years, let alone 20 years. We promise you that we can predict the growth and the schools are going to stay equal for 20 years. I think it's impossible. So based on our current, you know, where homes currently are approved to be built, like currently approved to be built, or on for sale, because then, even then, you're not guaranteed to get an elementary-age child in each home.
Right. But again, then, if that Shady Lane development is in Woodview, why would we increase the number with that carve-out?
Because the majority of lots for sale you have in the Kennedy area, you have 14 lots off Cheyenne, you've got, those are recently added, but like, for sale out in the town, which is all Kennedy, that's south of Falls, you have, I think, 26 lots for sale as of this moment?
But that's equal to what's for sale in the one that you mentioned, Lane.
Well, that's just for sale as of this date, like, not incoming, like, approved to be, you would still have another 13 to 15 lots approved. So, yeah, right now, they'd be about equal. But I would suspect, I mean, we're saying there are approved lots coming to Shady Lane. How many years does it take to build a house?
That's the question.
That's the other piece as well. So you, it gets approved, and then they go for sale, and then, then there's the building, and then, you know, we're a couple of years out.
Well, right, because even the neighborhood in the town, it's been for, I looked at it nine years ago to build a house there, and there's still 19 lots for, you know, so it's kind of a heaven's flow. It's not a, water stone still to this building house, you know?
Both option C and option D, in reality, it's amazing that they're as close as they are.
Yes, it's actually three students.
Right? I mean, you're within, you know, you're, yeah, you're within, you know, you're pretty close, less than a 1% difference.
In option D, is there a logistics advantage to that, that carve-out that extends down Falls Road?
But it did shorten the ride times.
Yeah, so option C is a reminder, option C, when I average them all together, and obviously, you know, if you're a statistician at all, you know, the, the average is bad. The mean is bad, mean is mean, because you can see that there is one that's 46 minutes, and then the rest are shorter. But in option C, it's a 21-minute average for Kennedy and a 33-minute average for Woodview. You have a 43-minute, a 45-minute at Woodview. So those are the big, those are the long routes. If you look at option D, it's an average of 22.6, it's 23 minutes, 23 minutes for Kennedy, with the two routes being 38 minutes. So those are the two longest routes. So 30, that 46-minute route basically means 38-minute route. And then Woodview drops from 33 minutes to 28 minutes, and the longest route being 39 minutes, one of 33, one of 31.
And option C is the least disruptive.
Option C is, option C is the least disruptive. There's 59, yep, excellent, 59 students, 40 families. Option D is 110 and 80.
And those are our current students, you discounted the fourth, the ones who aren't going to be there, right? You know how we were?
We did not. So, so we did.
Because I understand, but like, you're starting kindergarten in the new school, it's no more disruptive than.
I can, I can give you, so I can take out, I can take, I can't take out two grade levels, but I can take out one grade level.
Okay.
So if I were to take out, and I got to make sure I'm doing this right, or I'm accurate, because Rick, can I talk about this today again? So fifth grade is this year's fifth grade, right? This year's fifth grade. So I can't take out fourth and fifth, 17, 18.
Well, 05, it moves the kids who just left fifth grade or are starting sixth grade at John Law. So if you put in four, it will just pull out the per fifth grade.
So I, so I, so I can't pull out two. If we'd had another day, we probably could have gotten you two or three grade levels, but we didn't. But we, we look at option C, so when I change it to pulling out fifth graders, then, what, let me start with E or C, does it matter? Okay, so C. So starting with C. So then at Woodview, it's 17 families, 17, I'm sorry, 17 students, I apologize, 17 students and 11 families that would be displaced to Kennedy. At Kennedy, in option C, there'd be 30 students or 23 families displaced. And in option D, moving fifth grade, there would be, from Woodview, there'd be 18 students, which is 12 families. And at Kennedy, there'd be 75 students, which is 57 families.
Yeah, so still.
And we'll give you E, so. And, you know, I think the reason why we can see that it does, because this is such a, this is such a populated area, right there on that road there, you can, that's, we took that out, we took out a sliver, and you added all of this. You know, so that's, it's just a very populated piece, so it's going to displace the most. Board has to decide, what does that mean long-term? How does that set us up for future success years from now versus 18, 19?
If you refresh and get another copy on the tab, I changed the formula to rather than not, to be less than. So if you put in a number, it'll, it'll calculate all those tables with just whatever the grade level less.
So don't go to copy of family moves, go to family moves?
Copy of family moves.
Okay, and what do I do again, I'm sorry?
I already put in four, so now this, this formula only includes last year's pre-K through third grade.
So I can just, so I don't have to worry about that says five on my, on mine? I can ignore that?
Just hit, you're on the new tab.
Yeah, I hit refresh.
Copy, hit refresh, copy, then remove this.
Can you see me? Can you see me?
Rick, do you just want to read out the numbers?
Because you have it. That's fine, because, yeah, because I, mine still shows five, and I know you, when I say can you see me, that means, because we're in the Google Doc, so you can see where I'm at in the Google Doc, so I'm not losing it, I know you can see me.
Refresh, so you're, yeah.
You can see where my cursor's at, I slipped five in there, and I've refreshed a couple of times.
Okay, I put in four into it because that, that would exclude this year, this past year's fourth and fifth graders.
So if I put in four? Oh, oh, you do want me to be in copy of family moves?
Yes.
Got it. I'm sorry, I thought you said, okay. So if you have four in there, then, now this would be accurate. Is that what you're saying, Rick?
Yes.
So currently, this doesn't include, this wouldn't include who's starting kindergarten this year, this would just include?
Last, it would exclude.
Kindergarten, first, second, third.
Right.
Okay, kindergarten, first, second, third. So if I look at option C, thank you, Rick, at Woodview, there would be seven students and seven families that would be moved to Kennedy. At Kennedy, there would be 13 students moving to Woodview and 12 families. In option D, there would be eight students moving from Woodview to Kennedy and eight families moving from Woodview to Kennedy. And in option D, moving from... What did I just say the last one in? I said, moving from Woodview to Kennedy is eight and eight, moving from Kennedy to Woodview would be 31 students and 30 families. So it's, in option C, there's 20 students or nine, which is 19 families. And in option D, there are 39 students, which is 38 families.
So option D has double the amount of students and families moving from Kennedy to Woodview than option C, approximately.
In every instance, yeah.
I guess I'm just still thinking that, I mean, if we're going to do it this is the time, because we're asking 400 students to switch, you know, from Grafton, or 370 students from Grafton Elementary School to switch, along with, I don't even know how many families that equals out to.
Well, and that's where you can see that, like, even though you switch from C and D, you're, so, we're saying it's doubling the amount of people switching, but it's, it's taking more GES families and moving them to a different spot. So you're, you're still off by three in C and D overall. You're just moving families that are already moving to a different spot than what they were going to be moving to in option C. So that's, that's accurate. But it is moving existing families that aren't anticipating a move.
C is least disruptive. Clearly, right?
It is.
So are you looking for?
So C is least disruptive, but it has, it has more, it has longer route times. It all depends on, it's really going to come down to valuing something long-term.
Agreed.
Because, right, I mean, that's what we're going to say, is like, depends on which data point we want to look at. It isn't as easy as saying, it isn't easy enough to say, well, we're going to save money, so that would be a long-term savings that we could look at. It's, it's, it's a, it's a complex problem, looking for a simple answer.
Well, and that's why, for me, part of this is certainly ride times, but is the least amount of disruption. I mean, for a long time, I've been thinking, it shouldn't be Woodview and Kennedy, it should be Grafton Elementary School. Woodview location, Grafton Elementary School, Kennedy location. Why isn't Woodview and Kennedy? It's just Grafton Elementary School. I mean, our goal is that they're all doing the same things, that there's parity within all of those schools. So, you know, my intention would be to disrupt the fewest people and, and not have ride times increase appreciably, and be mindful of future development.
So, C, that, is that the least?
C is, to me, is least disruptive.
Development, that's what I'm asking, when you're talking about future development. Would that be the best?
I can't, I can't tell definitively, but it would seem, based upon just a real quick look at the village map, that big block that's in the northwest corner is comparable in size to the big block in the north-southeast corner. So having a dividing line, to me, that says having a dividing line that's north and south is logical. You know, whether that dividing line is D makes that dividing line uniform, other than the carve-out on the west side, right? That's all, that's the only difference in D.
Right.
The carve-out of the.
Of the First Avenue.
Of the First Avenue, yeah. And I know a historian pointed out that that's what, that was Woodview, right? Many, many, well, several years ago at least. But in other, I mean, it's hard to tell definitively where that development is, but it would seem to me that just looking at those are close. And, you know, the town development, I'm not sure.
Both options do decrease route times from currently. So when we, when I look back at my notes too, currently, we have Kennedy as an average of 31 minutes, on average, Woodview a 42-minute average, and GES is a 29-minute average.
What's the max route time currently compared to these?
It's on this right here, and so it says, it's on that St. Peter's.
Oh, there it is, okay.
40 minutes is what it is, but that'll show you that.
I see it.
Right there.
It's in the elementary town, it's on that. It's not, it's not going?
And that doesn't run the work.
The outliers was 55 minutes.
It's in the work, yeah.
It's in the work.
Oh, and the shut, no, we don't have shuttle time on that. No, we do not.
And there'll be no shuttle time.
That's correct. The shuttles, and just to be clear, I had Karen email me about that, about why are we not getting rid of shuttles? So shuttles are for the private, the propeal students. And we had the discussion today as well, years and years ago, we actually ran different buses for them, but it wasn't as cost-efficient as having them, you know, you can think of three different private propeal schools, and they could be living anywhere in the village or town, trying to get them somewhere. So having them ride a bus that's in there, already going by their house, bringing them to a location, then shuttling them out was more timely and more cost-efficient. That's good. So that's what the shuttles are for.
Are you looking for a decision tonight? You're just looking for a discussion tonight, right?
It is, it is on as a discussion action item.
Yeah, I wish you wouldn't.
Partly because of people like, no, I'm sorry, I'm hearing you. I'll watch the video. Jessica, thank you. But people reaching out, asking, like, can, I mean, and I have it both, I hear it both ways. Like, one is make sure you may take a, make a measured decision, make this a deliberative process, make sure we get plenty of community input. Another is saying, we'd really like to know what the, what the answer is. So this is truly, you know, what would the, we continue to try, keep trying to bring back more information for the board to consider. And we looked at A, we looked at B, we've looked at E, those three are out. So now we're at C and D. Is there, is there more information that the board would like to see on C or D? Is there, you know, would the board like to have a, a community listen session about C and D and allow community to give feedback? We could do a survey out to all of our, like, the board really needs to decide what would, what would make the most sense. We've had this on, I think, four different agenda topics now. So there's, I'm sure you're getting plenty of comments from people about various things. So.
There's no way to, maybe I asked the right way this, there's no way to wiggle these numbers so that the max ride times can be changed at all? This is like it?
There, there is some, there is some of that, there, there is some of that, I think, start to put them together more definitively.
Because to Paul's point, if C really disrupts the fewest families, if it could also bring the ride times down a bit, we'd get closer to having a clear winner, right? I wouldn't mind seeing that. I don't hold up the process, but it just seems like if we can do that, or if you guys say, don't worry, we'll get them down some, I guess we could go with that.
And I know this may not be popular, and I do understand the wanting to know. I feel like we're guessing on two years of data when we could get away with just waiting two months and only have to guess on one year worth of data. Because we would know how many kindergarten students we have enrolled and where, and we would know, because we already, to that man's point, we're already disrupting his family. You know, like, does he count as a disrupted family by having to go to GES this year and back to Woodview next year? Because I'm sure he would state that he is a disrupt, you know, whether or not we're disrupting families the following year, he would state, we disrupted, we disrupted eight families this year. I'm sure he would agree to that. And it's not that I want to delay, but guessing two years worth of data, like, which kids are going to enroll and which kids honestly aren't coming back, we'll know that in just two weeks when registration happens. Because I already know of four families who aren't, and I don't know whether or not they inform the school district that they're not registering come August, that they've even, you know, they, they decided.
We won't know in two weeks, though, because.
Three weeks, yeah.
We won't know in three weeks, it'll be, it'll be once school starts. So there'll be those that, like, yeah, was it coming? Or, oh, shoot, that's right, I was on vacation, or I just, I'm going to wait till the last day and just do it. So that, that's true in every district. So if you, if we say that, that we want to wait, you're correct, we wait till September. It would be September.
Third Friday count, in September, we're being accurate.
If it's a third Friday count in September, would be the accurate piece of what that would look like.
And then we would know 4K kindergarten for one year, and then we only have to predict how many kids are coming in 4K, you know, then it's less guessing. I feel like right now, we are guessing where the 4K students, the current upcoming 4K students are going to be, you know, live and are current kindergarteners are living. That's a guess at this point, and we're only two months from knowing where they actually do live.
That's, that's correct. And we're displacing more than eight students for next year, let's be clear about that, though. Because when we look at the map, we look at our current map, we can see, and we were showing, because Jeff's new, we were showing him the map today, and you can see there's a blue dot, and there's a gray dot, and there's an orange dot. And that means somebody living on the same street, one's going to Woodview, one's going to Kennedy, and one's going to GES for next year. Like, so we currently already displace numerous students, and I don't want to give a number, but it's a lot, that would go. a number, but it's a lot, that we'd go with that, that we currently have, and that's what we're trying to solve with this, is not having to do that and be in this spot again.
And in the end, that data, X number of weeks from now, would help us decide between C and D?
I think it would.
Or not likely present another option.
No, I don't think it would present another option, it would just make it a little clearer.
Right.
Because where we're guessing based on, even when we take out fourth and fifth, where is it trending right now? Because those kids who are enrolled in 4K and 5K, those are the kids who, you know, we at least can say, "Well, that's maybe where younger families are right now." Because they have 4K and 5K students this year, and those kids will be kindergarten and first grade students in 2018, 19. They're the ones who have the most years to go in those schools.
But, so, so to me, we're not gonna create a new option, we're gonna clarify C or D. Would it be beneficial to have a listening session? And I, I don't know, you know, if this is on the agenda, it's the middle of summer, but it's just an item on a school board meeting agenda. Would it make sense to have a listening session that just presents C and D? And, and we get some publicity around it, we maybe get more people in that, you know, these are the options that we're, that we're looking at. This is the data we're waiting to get, and this is when the decision will be made. So if you have comments or input, let's hear it now.
Jeff, what would you say is the downside to waiting two months? Do you think people are chomping at the bit and want to know now? I mean, because now we're talking about another setup, that we're weigh this against this. And we can't wait with the notion that we're gonna, we would be doing that solely because instead of displacing eight families, we might only displace six or whatever, it's, it's not a, we're not talking about huge numbers, and we still have to draw the line, and the people are gonna have to go from one school to the other. But do you think that, is there something that I'm, I'm not seeing a big downside to that, or something that you see that would make you think, "Don't wait, let's just get this figured out now"?
Well, the only downside would be is that we've been saying all along that we would have an answer for our school year review. If we can articulate why we've chosen to go in a different direction, then I think that's, that's the downside. Is there an opportunity for, you know, to get through registration, to get through, you know, the first week of school and have a listening session? You could publicize that, it could be something easily done, but, you know, I think that's totally something that could be done, and has been valuable to the board in the past of getting input on things. Could we do that before the next board meeting in August? We could possibly do that as well. I mean, but school has started, our next board meeting is after the first day of school.
I was gonna ask Jeff, when families register their students, is there a question as to whether or not they will be utilizing the bus? Because that would be useful information to have, too. Who's gonna be using the bus and who's not gonna be using the bus? Could that be added as part of registration?
I mean, we could, but you always want to leave it as much. I mean, it's more, if you're eligible for the bus, you think that's the only issue.
True. But I think, I think most people kind of know whether or not they're gonna be using the bus. Especially in, at the elementary level, they do, for the most part. Don't you agree with that?
I missed that one, I had one open counter question, I just had a thought about if we do wait, but thought about if we wait, we have a centralized registration process, that was fantastic, by the way. What would be the possibility of having those two plans there, where the superintendent or board members, they're answered questions? In theory, those two days, the majority of all families are gonna be coming through, and they can stop at that table and ask questions, and, you know, put their thoughts in there, and it'd be kind of like an ongoing listening session, but you hit the majority of families, because everyone's going out anyway. But I think the, I guess principals probably know, but I think they have pretty good attendance for that registration.
But to the 4K and kindergarten students, they are already registered, do they come to the August registration?
No, they have to come, every student.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
They're supposed to.
And then my, my question was, have we looked at, like, socioeconomic balance with any of these plans to see, like, how does that compare to two schools?
We've, we've not, we've not looked at our free and reduced list, which is what you'd be asking us. We have not looked at that to see what the breakdown of it currently is, what it currently is now, or what it would be moving forward.
Is there, is there anything else thought of that? And if there would be a major, I mean, I don't know, it would, based on certain, there'd be a shift in the balance or anything over there. And we're talking about trying to keep schools relatively, you know, some parity, Paul said. Maybe with that as well, I think that'd be something to consider.
And the issue with registration is, registration is a very busy time for families, there's a lot of moving parts, and even this year, one of the things that we noticed last year was that when we had a principal stand there, so like, last year, Kevin and Scott did it on themselves, to sort of stand and greet people every once in a while. When someone wasn't there, you walked in, and it was like, "Where do I go now?" There's just a lot of, that was the first time, but you've only done it once, and there's a lot of moving pieces that go with that. And breaking that out, how many hours is that? Like, the people coming in, like, they spend like 30 minutes, 45 minutes approximately?
Depends on if they pay online first.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
You pay online first, then you get to go home early.
It's really a quick turnaround.
Yeah, it is, because it's just pictures.
Yeah, you're right. And then the grade level.
Right. High school takes more because there's parking.
Right, right. There's other things, depending on the age of the kid, there might be other things that they would select or go with that.
Could the options be presented as part of online registration? Because a lot of families do use the online first.
Do you like a Google survey that people would really get input on?
Something like that, yeah. I don't know what the percentage of families that you, that did the online registration last year. It's not all families, but...
Well, they have to, they have to. If they don't do it ahead of time, they have to do it at registration.
And they do it at registration, too.
They have to interact with the computer at some point.
Okay, so, it would be right there on the computer. That might work.
Which would give the board feedback that you could look at in August?
If we're deciding between C and D, will it give us feedback that helps us decide between those two? I guess we're gonna mostly get feedback from the people that are on the bubble that will be, you know, affected. Everyone else is indifferent, probably. We should probably reach out to the people on the bubble and ask them for their input, because that's who we're really asking about, right?
I don't know. I don't think, I know people who are not on the bubble who do care one way or the other, because, but they probably care more than the displaced families. They're thinking of it from the ride time that, that's what they're probably looking at. So it may not just be people on the bubble, it's the people who, for other reasons.
Well, that, yeah, that's why I would like to really have the best ride times nailed down.
If we, if we had, if we had hard numbers, if we had hard numbers, would you, would that help you be able to narrow down the ride times to really see what that looks like? Is that helpful or not really? Because the route's gonna be the route.
Well, we're covering all of the areas. I mean, the route is really going to be...
Because even if you take out this year's, this year's fifth graders, the 4K wouldn't really help you, because that's a different...
Yeah, if you don't have a lot of fifth graders out to the east, do you run a route?
Right.
Right.
Does a route not need to go that far?
Well, Murphy's Law is, you still have to go this whole way, that whole distance to get that one child that lives in...
Yeah, you might not get 10, but you might only get one. But that's, that's what I'm wondering about, what, what helps you get a harder number for route times? If that's a, if that's a board priority, then what gets that? Because it sounds like that's something that's gonna be...
Certainly having the more accurate student data, there would be a benefit to that, yes.
And I still have that question about, is it hard to predict the traffic? I mean, and I know you said traffic changes every day, and I can tell you, driving to summer school, which is true, every day for summer school, I know how long it takes me to drive to Woodview slash John, you know, and I would assume most of my neighbors, I know how long it takes them. It is significantly more than it would take me if I'm driving to, even, I drove to John Long every morning to drop my son off. It takes me longer to obviously drive for summer school than it does for me to drop, than it did during the school year, to drop him off. Like, do we know, is it harder?
That's a call-in, that's a call-in, that's what they, that's what we're paying right way to do. Can I all honesty?
Just peak travel times, it's very different depending on what time of the morning or the afternoon. And summer school versus regular school also, I mean, you do more parents', obviously more parents' transport.
Right.
Because there's no bus.
Because there's no bus.
So it's gonna take longer, there's more parents' traffic.
Everyone's starting at the same time.
Well, it sounds like we can make the rationale for waiting, even though we can't promise that, what we had promised, that it's reasonable to say, "Let's wait and get some details" since we are trying to really fine tune this. I would suggest we table it.
The district registration is the ninth and 10th, and it's unlikely to have a possible board meeting on the 14th. Doesn't make sense to have a listening session on the 14th, because obviously it's gonna be very fresh, and people might, if they just got the information on the ninth and 10th. Even if it's a handoff that you give people in registration.
Just, I want, I, I get a little concerned about the beginning, the, like, the final week or two of trying to have a meeting when people are trying to maybe get a last-minute vacation in or extend a weekend or anything else. That's my only concern. That's why I'd say if you want to do a listening session after school begins, then you get through that. I hear what you're saying, and, you know, you can do whatever you'd like. But that'd be my only concern, is people trying to get that last-minute, three-day weekend in or a trip.
Like you said many times, if we do have the luxury, even though maybe some people don't look at it that way, we still have a long time before, it'd be nice to have everyone know before this school decides, but we don't have to. We still have a year before that affects everybody. If we really think that it's important to get the most information, and we have been criticized before for not getting enough information, I think it's best to just, you know, pick the way that we get the most people involved. I would say do that, wait until after school starts, and let's get the right numbers, and it's a reasonable delay.
And I think the board has determined, "Do you want more information from us?" You know, Dawn brings up socioeconomic, are you looking for a special ed status? Like, what, like, there's a lot of different things we can, there's a lot of data that goes into this that...
Well, can you show it with, I know all the ID students and early childhood students will be at Woodview, is there any way to take those kids, I mean, don't we really, you know, if they're in the Kennedy area, they're at Woodview anyway? So if we're looking at numbers, we're truly not even included at Kennedy, as, because they'll be at Woodview, no matter what.
Those numbers are so small, though.
Okay. Well, isn't it, it's probably 20 families?
Where they're living at. Suzanne, do you have an idea of that?
How many families, how many families that would impact?
Some are already, like, say, some are already, no matter what.
Some of them already live in their, in Woodview area.
Yeah, yeah, no matter what, they're going to be...
But if they live in the, no matter where they live, they're going to Woodview, so...
Right, correct, yep. So we can say, like, in that area, what are those students, and that number, does that impact C and D? Because it does, it has to, right? There's no way all of them live in a certain area, like...
I doubt they all live in Woodview.
So it'd be easy to, to see that, of like, how many that is, and just 20 total?
They don't all live in Woodview, because I had a map done, Rick did it for me.
Okay.
And I want to say it was like eight or five.
We can get you that information, let's, we'll get you that information.
But I guess, as it relates to broader socioeconomic, would a disproportionate shift or mix result in a difference of service or in a difference of our ability to deliver service? To me, it doesn't seem like it would. Our service level is gonna be the same regardless of the, the mix of socioeconomic factors at each of these schools, right? I mean, we're not gonna change. And, or are we talking about if we understand that there's a difference in this mix, that we grandfather somehow? We're trying to understand what we would do with the data, if we had the data. That's why I say we should have GES. There's the Woodview campus, and there's the Kennedy campus.
All fundraising goes to the same. Two different schools, but fundraising differently. Like, Woodview can use 6,000, GES might do 7,000, and Kennedy might do 4,000.
But what if the whole community got together as GES, and it was 10,000, it was split even?
We're gonna try to be a Title I district, so it wouldn't...
It doesn't work that way. It can't be a Title I district.
But, but even if, so, would there be an impact at the Title I level? Because that's, that's the delivery of service, is it not? How so?
So, exactly what is your question? Would there be an impact in which, in which way?
Well, if there was a disproportionate number of Title I in one area versus the other, Title I services and funds would be greater in one area versus the other.
So, let me explain how it works really, really quickly. So the title funds are based on the number of free and reduced students in a building. So, right now, for example, Kennedy and Woodview both are title schools, GES is not. So, the question is, when we disperse those GES kids, is, is one, you know, routes, or is C or D gonna change? So, you don't, they don't stay title, so it's not by per child, so it would be looking next year at the title formula, that's a state formula or federal formula, and seeing which school, if both, or one, or two, meet those requirements. And again, the high school's in that mix, John Long is in that mix.
So let's assume that they both meet the requirements.
If they both meet the requirements, then it, it doesn't matter, because we can control how we use that title money.
But let's say off chance, one of the options causes one of the schools not to meet the title. That would have a big impact then on...
Yes, it would.
Okay.
So then we do need the information.
But it may also result then in the high school qualifying.
It could. And most likely, it probably, I would think it would.
Because we've, we've run that formula, because there's different ways to run the formula that go with that. So, it's just depending on how you...
Okay.
Diane can explain that.
Sorry, I'm just confused, like, if an elementary school doesn't qualify, how does that make a high school qualify?
So, there's three different formulas, which, I don't even know what they are. You basically click three different buttons, and you can see how each formula plays out in your district. So, for example, last year, one formula, what Kennedy and Woodview and John Long all qualified, GES and the high school did not. And a different formula, the high school did qualify, but it took Woodview out of, out of the mix. And so, as a district that believes in early intervention, we didn't choose that formula. Obviously, we wanted as many elementary schools to, to, to get the title funding. GES doesn't, didn't qualify in any of the formulas. And, so that's, and John Long, I think, qualified in two and not all three. So, it, it just, there's three different pre-made formulas that you can play around with a little bit in the grant, but you really, you don't know completely. Usually, we can guarantee Woodview and Kennedy, but next year's a big unknown, obviously.
What is the data that's required to complete the form? Do we have that data now? Is the data geographic?
So, so they use, they use the census data every, like, I don't know, 10 years or whatever, to, to determine your district amount of title. And then out of that district amount, they use your free and reduced, which is highly confidential. So, like, principals, we don't even know who the free and reduced families are, but that, that is entered into the data, and that's what they use to determine which building meets the requirements.
But it, so it's entered by building? This confidential data is entered by building?
So it's collected...
Or collected by building?
It's collected through the title grant. Kara, do we, and we do that by building, don't we? Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we would have to get the data, I mean, ultimately, we're gonna need the data to run the formula. So, when does that get determined?
So, we don't have our title grant yet for this next year. DPI has not, you remember, they're going through this big transition, and so we, I still, we still have not gotten our, our numbers, our allotment. So I would expect it to be soon, but it's a little bit fuzzy this year, because it's a transfer, it's a transition to the ESA. And so, I would hope, you know, in the next few weeks, that we would, we would know. For this year, for this...
For this year.
And there's no way to know for the next year, until August or September of the next year?
And it's every year.
And there's no way to model, I can't model the information, because it's confidential.
And looking at, you know, other type of diagnosis, if you say, like, special ed And looking at, you know, other type of diagnosis, if you say, like, special ed students, we don't, we don't say you have 400, we don't say you have 400 students in your school, so therefore we have a formula that says that. So we're looking at individual students and our EPs and allocation of resources that we make towards that. So that is something that if there's more special ed students in one building, then you have more support in that building or the grade level.
Right, that was my position.
It's still an overall, it's still an overall budget number that we have set because of the number of students that we have, but it is allocated depending on the student, not depending on, you know, a fixed number of students. Does that make sense? Individual students versus the, so it's more macro than micro. So to answer that question, I think that's what you were asking.
That's what I was, what I was getting at. So any change in this will run a risk of disrupting...
Yes.
That which we can't know or project.
But even if we didn't make it, but even if, but to be clear, even if we didn't make a change, we run a risk of not qualifying. Like, that's also true. It's a yearly, it's a yearly...
But John Long, for example, sometimes qualifies, sometimes doesn't.
Sure.
I think we're making a case to wait with the information also.
Okay.
So let's do that. Is that okay?
Okay, so, so let's circle back to what we want, I don't know, what we'd like, is, it sounds like we'd, you'd like us to develop some type of feedback for parents to give us, that we'd like to include in our online registration, to get some type of feedback.
Can we present C and D?
Yep.
And then can you also collect the data as to whether or not they will be utilizing the bus?
Write that down, I don't know if we can, but, right? And then we can, yeah, we, so we'll get that data, so we'd maybe give them a week to finalize it. I mean, right, well, I guess if they, if it's a part of their online registration, then they find, then they do it then, so theoretically...
I don't think we want to make them do it, though.
Sure, not saying that, but I'm saying, the majority of people would do it by the 10th, right? And we, so by the 20th, what's, when's our next meeting? I've already said we're on the wrong date.
The 20th.
Fourth, I want to say 22nd, but I only get the 20th, 22nd.
First is...
Thank you, 28th, thank you, yeah, thank you. 28th, so by then, we would have time to give it to the board ahead of time, to be able to look at it, and then to have an open discussion about what that data looks like, and sort of put it together and show it up there.
Yeah, and then I'm just thinking, we're one month shy of the third Friday numbers. But, okay. I don't know if we'd make the decision without...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, that would be part of the community input that you would then have in place to then have that, because I think if we wait till September, then you're going to have community input to consider, as well as route times, as well as numbers. I think, you know, we're, then it turns into a very long discussion. So just to be, sort of chunk it, like we've been doing, we've sort of been chunking it. We've, you know, we've had current, we had A, and we had B, and then we had C, and C, B, C, and then we've got C, D, E. So we have C and D. So we're done looking at, so really, we could say to families, though, C and D are the two options we're looking at as a board, and we're looking for input on this that would help us with our decision-making practice. So we'll have to, we'll have to see what that survey looks like and questions we can collect there.
Okay.
And try some open-ended, that's what we're looking for.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion or questions? Then Fund 46 transfer, Topher.
All right, a little over a year ago, the district created Fund 46. We transferred $360,000 in the 15-16 fiscal year into Fund 46. This year, or, still living in the past, we're still trying to close the books for this year, but for 16-17, we budgeted a $100,000 transfer into Fund 46. Administration is recommending an additional $30,000 transfer for the 16-17 school year, which school districts have until, through July, to make a transfer that they can book to June 30th to make part of the prior fiscal year. That would bring our 16-17 transfer to $130,000. We already have in our current preliminary budget, a $130,000 transfer into Fund 46. If we continue that transfer each year, then by June 30th, 2021, we would have over a million dollars in Fund 46. And again, as a reminder, with Fund 46, the, the year you make the transfer is when it impacts shared cost. So, for example, if we had a million-dollar project to do in August of 2021, we could pay for that project, there would be no shared cost impact, because we've been taking that shared cost impact in the year that we transfer those funds. So we would just look for a recommendation to make that additional $30,000 transfer, in addition to the $100,000 transfer that we budgeted for.
So, to your point, like, that $30,000 transfer now would not impact your $885,000, the shared cost impact for next year?
Yes, it would. It would.
Okay. But not significant?
No, it wouldn't significantly, and that, reaching that goal of a million dollars, so that we can tackle projects without taking a big hit to shared costs is kind of the goal with that. I mean, it puts us on track to, to reach what we stated during the referendum processes, that we would get a million dollars in Fund 46 by the time the money became available. And, in all honesty, where we're projecting to end the year, we're still looking at having potentially between $300,000 and $400,000 of being under budget, adding to fund balance, and looking at having a, a lower shared cost because of that.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
Move to accept the recommendation to increase the Fund 46 transfer by, by $30,000 for a total transfer of $130,000 for 2016-17 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
So is there any other questions for Topher on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. Student activity accounts.
All right, on June 22nd, the, the board updated our policy for managing student activity funds, and so now we bring forward a list, so that was included in your packet, a list of activity funds at, at the high school, at the middle school, as well as the elementary schools, for your approval. And this was looked over, I'll give a little background. This was a heavy emphasis in the 15-16 school year at Wasbourn Conferences, to really take a look at activity funds, also known as Fund 60 funds, and making sure they are truly student-directed and student-managed. So there was a lot of change going on that year. We're taking a look at it this year, and we've had meetings with, with building personnel to ask about all the different groups and clubs and activities we have out there, to make sure we have them in the proper fund. So these are the, the, basically, the accounts or the funds we're bringing forward for your approval, because this is where our student activity funds will be accounted for, deposited as well as expended.
Topher, why at the high school, we have class of 2018, 19, and 20, but at John Long, it is called 6th, 7th, and 8th grade?
There's always a 6th, 7th, 8th grade. I mean, I suppose you could call them class of whatever they may be, going forward.
Where do we carry with them, from 6th grade to 7th grade?
It, I don't believe it does. So I, I do believe they have to expend those funds that year that they raised it. Maybe it would be transferred over to 7th grade, maybe it'd be transferred to 8th grade. I haven't really looked into that.
Any grade level college usually has been, has been run by, like, our, our teachers, like, 7th grade, like, the teachers put on, like, a Halloween dance, and that money goes into the offset field trip cost.
So does it get, I think his question is, is it, that gets zeroed out? So if they, if it's the field trip cost and they just, like, zero that account out at the end of the year?
Yeah, they use their money, what they fundraised, they use it that year. I don't, I haven't heard of them carrying over half the carryover money for the 7th grade. But I can look into that to see, I would, if I were guessing, I would guess that the 7th grade teacher, team teacher, if there's a excess, they would keep it with the 7th grade team to use it the next year for 7th grade. But I can look into that.
My guess is, it would also be a pretty minor amount. I mean, they're not, these aren't big, big account balances.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make that one. Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. School fees.
All right, administration is not recommending a change to fees for next year. We have included a, a school fee comparison chart, so that we can take a look at how our fees compare to surrounding districts. Our fees are lower than surrounding districts, so we are suggesting that going into the following year for 18-19, perhaps sometime in spring, late spring, we would look at potentially gradually increasing fees to come more in line with surrounding districts. But for this year, we would not be recommending any change to our fees.
I notice with the technology user fee, really, for our kindergarten, elementary, we are actually right up there with MECH 1, close to MECH 1 Thievesville, because it's $25 per student even in elementary school. So if I'm enrolling an elementary school student, I write a check for $65.
Kindergarten is not included?
But they have a milk fee.
It's, it's changing to a snack fee this year.
Oh, okay.
Or a nutrition fee.
Okay.
So if you take, if you take a look at the technology fee and you move it over to, say, elementary, middle school, high school, and let's, let's pretend that's actually just part of the registration fee, then we'd be right around average, because it would push the average up, and so those fees would be about average. Where the, the real differentiation comes from is the athletic fees, we're awfully low there, and same with parking. If, let's say, let's pretend the district charged the average athletic fee participation rate, that would be an additional $20,000 in revenue for the district. If we charged the average parking rate, that would be an additional $25,000 in revenue for the district.
Thanks, I was just looking at the lower end, and I agree, it's a snack. You know, all I know is when parents write the check, it doesn't really matter to them, which if it's a snack fee in registration or technology, it's just one check. So, Topher, if we looked at it next year, would it be a gradual step up to reach the average then?
That would probably, probably be ideal, in that you don't want to have a, a big change all at once.
And if we were looking at that, we would, we would bring more schools to the table. This is truly just our surrounding communities, but we could look at, you know, the athletic conference just became bigger with the WIA realignment, so you would add, you could add West Bend, you could add Slinger, you could add, you know, Hartford, I mean, all the people that are in, typically, we're looking at things that are in your athletic conferences, how you look at data. So if you do that, we can look at different things. We wouldn't, we wouldn't bring you three, this is really just to show you the ones that are immediately next to us, what they're doing.
Right. And since they haven't been raised since 2013 or 2014, that probably doesn't make sense to take a look at it next year. Do we have, I see the athletic fee, is there an, there's an activity fee in middle school, too?
An activity fee?
You want it to be in, like, destination imagination, is there a fee that you have to pay?
For forensics, we have a, a fee for forensics, but that is the only one that comes to mind to be on that one.
Okay. I thought before there was a fee, and I did not do destination imagination this year, but I thought previously there had been a fee. There was.
Is there a fee?
And not just at the middle school. No, it was, yeah.
Is there a fee to be, like, in the high school drama, or the musical, or?
I don't know the answer.
So we can find that, we can get information like that for you, because a lot of people, you know, we say sport, and some people do charge you for activities, some people don't, all those pieces. Mr. Van Dyson's on vacation. Mr. Seb, you know that, there is.
Yes.
So we can...
Well, yeah, just so...
We can get you that.
Yeah, in future, for you, because it says, like, MECH 1 Thievesville per activity, I was curious, like...
Because I don't think they separate. So it'd be interesting, character, if you write that down, we would see, do we separate athletics versus activities? Is it a different fee for athletics versus an activity piece, and what does that mean? I've seen it where even, like, depending on the activity, it's a different fee. Which is, you know, this is really confusing, but, yeah.
And when we do have this discussion next year, we can also discuss whether or not we want to have a cap, like some other school districts have for athletics, because it looks like currently we don't.
We do.
There is.
Oh, there is a cap, okay.
Yeah, there is a cap, there is a cap.
I would just suggest, as it relates to parking, that we not look to phase this in gently. There is no reason why we're that. How much does it cost to repave the high school parking lot, Jay?
Eighteen.
How much?
Eighteen.
$25,000 a year would go a long way to the maintenance for using that parking lot. And that's, that's not an unreasonable, odd in $50, that's not an unreasonable fee. I would look to increase it this year, but I understand it's late in the game.
Right, we don't want to, yeah, we don't want to surprise people. And the thing, as Topher is saying, too, we're looking, and I know you're not saying that, but some of these pieces are optional fees. It's one thing to say a registration fee for all kids is a certain price point, it's another thing to say, you know, we just, we've just spent, how many minutes, we spent talking about busing, that we provide for all students. So you may choose to not take busing, because you want to drive, but then that's an optional piece that would go with that. And, and it isn't just repaving the lot, it's also snow, flower removal, snow removal, salting, all those pieces, making sure that, you know, it's safe for our students as well. Security cameras that we're looking at.
Just came up three years with the superintendent, who really thought he wanted to keep fees low, so he really have kept, kept them probably artificially depressed a little bit, especially the parking fee, and they just fell into that whole conversation, and it, it is time to bring that up again, because we have been way behind everyone else, and it is, that distinction you make is a good one. It is an optional, it's, it's a privilege, not a right, to be able to, you know, park in their lots, right?
Yeah, I mean, that really is key, because I don't think we want to, we want to make it as, as, as free as possible, as free and portable education as possible for all, all of our families, but then there are optional pieces that truly go with that and could go along with that philosophy.
And that parking fee is for the whole year, not just per semester, correct?
Correct.
There, I mean, you can do, I believe you can do semesters, a semester would be heck of that, but that would be for the whole year.
So, and it should be good, this is something that we will, we'd just like to bring to your attention, we aren't recommending increasing at all, anything, but we do, is something similar to other things, which is periodically, we should bring back to the table, just have a discussion to look at, what is the average? You don't want to be the high, and do that, where we are with that.
So you want a motion for this to keep them the same, or do we just keep them the same? All right, do I have that motion?
I move to approve the administration recommendation that fees for the 2017, 2018 school year remain unchanged from the 2016-2017 school year.
Second. May further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. Funding for athletic fields.
So let me, let me start with this, and I'll turn it over, turn it back to Topher. So this is something Paul, you'd asked for us at our last meeting to say, and I think maybe multiple people then jumped in on that, asking, you know, as we've had all these discussions, where, where are we looking at with our funding for the different things? We have a lot of moving pieces going on across the district, and so we've had meetings with, you know, at the last Village meeting that multiple of you were at, you know, they approved, their finance committee approved, unanimously approved, moving forward to be able to add the parking lot at Kennedy in replacement of their tennis courts. And so that's going to, kind of building equal schools, that's really going to help us with that, but then it's the funding of those types of things. So we have multiple things that we're looking at here, that Topher has a multiple-page document that talks about the pieces that go with that.
Yes, so we, in all the discussions surrounding our facility advisory committee, and then as we moved to recommend a referendum, there was discussion around the athletic field projects. And so the board ultimately decided not to include those athletic field projects in the referendum, and just over, over a number of board meetings, decided that the district would be willing to use fund balance toward, toward funding those projects. And we discussed various ways we could do that, we could just take it straight out of fund balance, and there were pros and cons to that. We also discussed using borrowing authority we had, so that we could pay for, for that million, roughly at the time, million-dollar project, and maybe pay that off over five years. That would spread the impact to our fund balance, it would also spread the impact to our shared cost as well. There's a third option that administration is recommending, and that is, for all intents and purposes, it is like transferring fund balance into Fund 41. You can't, you can't actually do that, the process is, all money into Fund 41 has to be levied. So as part of our budget next year, we would levy an additional, I believe it's somewhere around $380,000 into Fund 41. That means we would have to reduce the levy that would be going into Fund 10, because that's all controlled by the revenue limit. We wouldn't necessarily change our expenditure budget, so essentially, we'd be budgeting for a $380,000 drop in our fund balance. That's how that would be moving into Fund 41. Then the following year, when we'd have to do the softball and baseball fields, we'd have roughly another, I believe, $800,000 almost, that we would also levy into Fund 41, essentially spending down fund balance. Now, the advantage of that, and you can see that in this chart, the, the first grouping, the first column there is, is just drawing it straight from fund balance. So the fund balance over two years would essentially drop almost 1.2 million dollars. The shared cost would hit immediately. So as soon as you spend that money, even though it was, it was in fund balance, that immediately hits shared cost, which then the following year impacts our state aid. And you can see the nearly $400,000 of state aid we'd lose over the course of two years. Now by doing the, the debt levy or the, um, by borrowing money to do that, and then spreading those payments over five years, would spread out that shared cost. However, that would also come with interest fees. So a, a rough estimate is that we'd be paying over 1.3 million dollars to pay for those field, the athletic field projects. And that shared, or the state aid impact would be a loss of almost $450,000 of state aid. Now with this third option where we would levy the money into Fund 41, drawing down fund balance, again, over two years, we would be drawing down fund balance over a million dollars, but the shared cost impact would be smoothed out over a long period of time. Fund 41, unlike Fund 46, where when you make the transfer, you pay the, the shared cost impact happens then, not when you spend it, Fund 41, as you levy, does not impact shared cost. It, Fund 41 has a, has a, an impact to shared cost when you spend the money, but is, it's also spread out over the amount of time that you have levied in Fund 41 since, since its existence. So we've had Fund 41 since, I believe, 2003, 2004, somewhere in there. So that spend would be spread out all the way you can see to 2032, 33. The shared cost impact would be fairly minimal, and then when you look at that state aid, it spreads the cost of those athletic field projects over a longer period of time. So we're recommending that. If you move to the next chart, it would, it shows essentially what would happen to our fund balance by levying that fund balance essentially into Fund 41. So you'll see an estimate for what we believe, there's a good chance we'll begin 2017, 18 with roughly a $5 million fund balance. We're still closing out the year, still booking some things, but we believe that this year will be somewhat similar to some of the, the years we've had in the past. Three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in a fund, addition to fund balance. If that happens, then moving forward by budgeting the $380,000 and then almost $800,000 over the next two years, you'll see the impact to, to fund balance. That's assuming though, that we don't add anything to fund balance in essentially the regular budget. For example, if we finish the 17, 18 year similarly to how we have the past three years, and we are able to add $300,000 in fund balance, then you're talking about having 4.9 million dollars at the end of 17, 18 rather than 4.6. And the addition of that would happen, same thing in 2019, 20. This chart assumes we wouldn't continue what we've done the past few years and be able to add money into fund balance. So those are the, the athletic field projects, soccer, baseball, softball.
And even the worst case scenario, it's still at 15.4% and board policy is 10 to 15%. So you're still above board policy, so even though you're seeing it go up and then come down, and you'd have all of the athletic fields, the soccer, baseball and softball completed as well, and still be above the board policy. Worst case scenario.
Looking forward to the next, um, draw for the construction, minimal impact there.
Um, when you're talking about, as we originally started talking about, a million dollar hit all at once, and there was some concern over that, we won't, that hit will not technically have occurred. They'll note that it's in our budget, they'll note that when they're giving us our credit rating, they'll notice we have that in our budget, but they still won't know how we actually finished the year. And again, if we're adding, let's say if we're up at 5 million already, we'd be looking at budgeting a drop down to about where we finished last year. So our fund balance would still be in really good shape.
You would run two years deficits in Fund 10.
Yes.
Is that, could it have an impact on credit ratings?
Well, we'd have to go, we'd have to be, go and borrow money in the future and have a credit rating done. We'll certainly have one done in January, and again, they may look at our budget, that it's a deficit budget, but it will not have finished, so we don't really know how that year will have ended.
The, the only other question I have, Topher, is Fund 41 can only, we talked, talked about this for sites and for buildings. When I look at the cost that we looked at for these projects at the, at the advisory committee, there's roughly $100,000 in each of the varsity baseball field and softball diamond for line fencing, batting cages, foul poles, scoreboard, bleachers. Will they qualify for funding out of Fund 41? They're not.
Boy, I believe they would, yes.
Okay, we should just confirm that. I mean, I, I don't know that they're site or buildings, but I guess you could make an argument, they're part of the building of a baseball diamond, but I'd, I'd like just some confirmation of that.
Sure, yeah, I can email, email DPI and get clarification on that.
Because it's, it's about $120,000 in each of those two categories for those things that, you know, they're not site work, they're assets, that are part of that program.
All right, and I'm gonna, there's like two pieces, so I'll talk about tennis courts as well. Maybe we should have created another agenda item, I'm not sure. So for the tennis courts, we have an estimate that it's going to cost us about $160,000 to install the tennis courts on the Woodview John Long Middle School campus. Taking a look at Fund 41, we had, during the, the facility advisory committee process leading to the referendum, we had identified items that were previously in the referendum that we moved to Fund 41 and said we would, we would take care of those projects in Fund 41 and not the referendum because they, they wouldn't necessarily last 20 years. I provided this chart, and these are, not, not including the tennis courts on bottom, these items were all included in that Fund 41 list. Since our, our last discussion with Fund 41, which probably took place, uh, probably sometime during the winter, we've been able to resurface the athletic track and do tuck pointing and sealing at John Long Middle School within the 16, 17 Fund 10 maintenance budget. So that is no longer needed in Fund 41, those funds become available. In addition, as we look forward to doing a performance contracting, where lighting projects will be important to include in performance contracting, those should not necessarily be in Fund 41 as a project. So as we take those out, that makes about, that comes to about $155,000 of new room in Fund 41, which then would, would allow for us to do the tennis courts and still be on pace where we were before. And you can see on the bottom of, of the chart, if you look at the column for 17, 18. So we start the year with $200,000 in Fund 41, assuming we levy the, the traditional 50,000, let's not talk about the, the 380,000 for the soccer field, but we, we traditionally levy 50,000 a year. If we do that, that's, that's $250,000 that becomes available this year. We spend 160 on the tennis courts, we are still left at the beginning of 18, 19 with $90,000. And again, that, that, if you keep moving along the chart, we have the money to fund all the projects that we had identified for Fund 41. It's just that now, some of it has already come off the books and placed somewhere else, so we have room for those tennis courts. And ultimately, what we're looking for, because this would be part of that published budget that we would go to with, that, that you would see in August for approval, for then publication in September, we're looking for the board to approve that this funding mechanism be included for this upcoming school year budget.
Does anyone have any questions for Topher, or want to make the motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? I like the way this is more, this funding mechanism, it changes all the time, it keeps getting better, I like that.
Well, yeah, I, I gotta say, I gotta commend administration for coming up with this creative way to, to, you know, save the interest costs under one option, but to continually find ways to, to, to reduce the impact on shared costs and take advantage of all of the tools that are available by the statute. I think that's commendable. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Academic standards.
Yes, every year we need to discuss our academic standards, you probably start our school year, and so we typically do this in August, but we're starting the year before our next board meeting. So I'll have Diane talk us about our academic standards that we do here in Granton.
Right, so this became a requirement starting last year, so there are no changes to what we presented last year to the board as part of the standards that we look at. So in general, we look at a multiple, multiple different standards, and I can tell you that our power standards, our priority standards that we've been talking about for the last year come from all of these different areas, depending on the course or the content. So the Wisconsin academic standards and the Common Core state standards, we use Common Core primarily in reading and in math, and Wisconsin academic standards primarily in many of the other content areas, pulling in some disciplinary literacy standards, the ACT college and career readiness standards, which are very similar to those disciplinary literacy standards out of, that, those come from Common Core and college and career readiness is part of ACT. We use a combination of the Wisconsin academic and the next generation standards for science, and then we use the national standards as well for the areas of health, world, language and art. So there are no changes, so we're just providing you that information, and we have to post it before the first day of school. Did you have any questions?
Where is this fund on our website?
It is under teaching and learning.
Departments and colleges, teaching and learning.
Right.
No, it's an academic standard.
It'll say academic standards, right. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
Sure, we need a motion.
This is information only, I thought.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's just information only.
I thought it needed to be approved. I'm sorry.
Well, we can.
I'm trying to think.
Well, we did last year.
And that was the first year.
It was the first year, though.
Um, it probably wouldn't hurt for the board to approve it.
It says to notify parents and guardians of.
And we'll put that in our notes to make sure that we know that, because we do have to do it, we have to, we have to have it on our website, and the board has to, there's no change. So I guess if there was a recommendation to approve the unmodel academic standards for the 17, 18 school year.
I move to approve the recommendation, to approve the notice of student academic standards for the 2017, 2018 school year.
I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, thanks, Diane. Education for employment, PI 26.
So this is a requirement new this year, similar to last year, a new requirement. Now, this is a new requirement issued by PI 26, which is at employment as well as our academic clear plan, career planning. So Stephen's going to walk us through that.
What's that? Oh, okay. All right. So this is part of an administrative rule for the state of Wisconsin. It's, PI 26 is the chapter of that administrative rule. It's been in place since 1997, 98 school year, and every five years, districts have had to write a new, new plan for, and what it is for is education for employment. So that E for E stands for education for employment. So just to give you a background of what PI 26 states, it states that all school boards in the state of Wisconsin must provide access to an education for employment plan approved by the superintendent, the state superintendent. The purpose of education for employment programs is to do all of the following. Prepare elementary and secondary students for future employment. Ensure technological literacy and promote lifelong learning through growth mindset. Promote good citizenship. Promote cooperation among business, industry, labor, post-secondary schools and public schools. And establish a role for public schools in the economic development of Wisconsin. So in order to be approved by the state superintendent, the education for employment plan has to incorporate each of the following. Applied curricula, guidance and counseling services related to academic and career planning, which must be implemented starting this school year. Technical preparation programs designed to gain advancement and standing in associate degree programs, college preparation, youth apprenticeship programs, or other work-based learning opportunities, instruction in skills related to employment, development and application of employability skills, rigorous C to E curriculum that correlate with economic development, and it also addresses implementation for grades K through 12. So the education for employment plan is for K through 12, and academic and career planning is a very large part of that plan, and that's for grades 6 through 12. So the annual requirements of PI 26, so every year, we must publish certain information on student transcripts regarding courses such as AP courses, credits and eligibility for post-secondary credit. We must also review and update the district education for employment program and long-range plan evaluating student post-secondary outcomes from that plan. Publish the district education for employment long-range plan on our district website and annually notify parents of the education for employment program. So, um, the first part of the education for employment plan that you received in your, in your packet, which starts on pages two through four, is we must use labor market analysis. So we're going to use as our regional market, Ozaki County, and then, and I just gave a real, a snapshot of the current summary for Ozaki. So our top industries by employment are educational services, food and beverage services, healthcare services, professional and technical services, fabrication and manufacturing. Our profile for the county at this time, manufacturing is the largest sector in terms of not only employment and wages, but also job growth. It accounts for 23% of our county's jobs and 30% of its wages. The second largest employment sector is education and health. And that information we want to use to help students, you know, plan for growth of our regional economy. And then we also want to look at Wisconsin labor market analysis and national, because we know we don't have students just staying in the county, we're not just preparing students for our own economy in the county, but we have students that are also going to go, you know, outside of Ozaki County in the state and go outside of the state of Wisconsin. So in the state of Wisconsin, the leading jobs in Wisconsin by industry are manufacturing, followed by healthcare and social assistance industry. And nationally, 13 of the 20 fastest growing occupations in the U.S. are in the healthcare industry at this time. So it's really important for us to know, so we can be properly, properly preparing our students for, you know, where the jobs are. So the emphasis for elementary, for our education for employment program is career awareness, where you're going to focus on why people work, work environments, levels of training and education needed for work, common expectations for employees in the workplace, and how expectations at schools, in school are related to expectations in the world of work. The emphasis at the middle school is career exploration, so developing an understanding of the continuum of careers across work environments, duties and responsibilities, how a student's personal interests and skills relate to those careers, which they do through our career software tool, Naviance, and career research identifying personal preferences in relation to occupation and careers that a student may want to pursue. And the high school, the emphasis is career planning and preparation, conducting career research to identify personal preferences in relation to specific occupations, work-based learning experiences, career decision-making, practical application of academic skills, applied technologies, economics and personal financial literacy, access to career and technical education programs, access to up-to-date regional, state and national labor market information, and developing and refining those skills and behaviors needed to obtain and maintain employment. So a very large part of our education for employment plan is academic and career planning. Our education for employment program will provide students in grades 6 through 12 with academic and career planning services, providing each student with the following. Individualized support appropriate to the student's needs to complete an And parent engagement as part of our education for employment plan, we'll use, and we have used orientation events such as our GHS experience and freshman orientation, digital media be posted on our website, use social media to send updates out, and what, when we have opportunities for parent engagement, and then district news. We have individual ACP conferences between the counselor, the student, and parents. We have parent-teacher conferences, newsletters, which will come out from John Long Middle School and Grafton High School covering 6 through 12. So our goals in long-range planning as part of this five-year education for employment plan is being intentional about providing employability skills to all students, prioritizing those soft skills in our pre-K through 12 curriculum, engaging students in the application of skills, knowledge, behaviors, and expertise necessary to succeed in work, post-secondary education, and life in the 21st century, producing self-directed learners who think creatively, work collaboratively, and apply reason to solve critical global issues we have not yet experienced, expanding our business and community partnerships to promote better cooperation between all stakeholders in our district, and constantly refining our academic and career planning process. So you also receive, there's the whole education for employment program, employment program and long-range plan is included in your packet. I just summarized everything that's in there, but there's more detailed information within that plan. So administration recommends that the plan is approved so that we can post it on our district website, because September 1st is when all districts across the state of Wisconsin must have it approved by their school board and must have it posted on their district website.
Do we have a motion to approve the E for E plan? Is there some questions?
I have a question.
Well, we can get a motion on the table and ask.
Make a motion.
Okay, questions?
Thanks. Jeff Cutler's itching back. So Suzanne, one of your slides said that the second-largest employment sector is education. And I was just curious, I was looking through this plan, which was great, but I was wondering if we've had any discussions about a Grow Your Own program in Grafton because of the teacher shortage that is affecting a lot of districts across the state. It would seem like that would might be a nice thing to start talking about.
Yeah, I know, it's something that districts are talking and some districts are doing. So it would be, you know, I could definitely do some research into, you know, I think Peewaqui is one of them, right, that is doing that? So that is definitely something that, you know, we can start talking as an administrative team.
I'm sure there's some resources, and I was thinking, I'm not sure, maybe it's already included as one of the career clusters.
Right.
But, you know, it should at least definitely be there, but also just to kind of, you know, generate interest. We have to do something about that.
Yeah, that was one of those data points I brought back. I think it was the spring superintendent conference that Norah shared that PowerPoint that I'd gone, I think it was a pre-session of what it was, and they were talking about that. And I know that at the high school, when they do their career day, that all students go into the gym and walk around, they have to hit three or four careers, whatever, they've done it for multiple years, but I think it was the last, or was the first year they realized that we don't have teachers represented because they're all teaching. So, you know, so it was hard to get a teacher, so they got subs. And I remember the teachers that were in there and then talking to students about choosing the education as an option. So even getting that piece, because you're sort of assuming, you're right, can't assume, well, you're with me every day, you know, you must be thinking about this, talking about the benefits, you know, those pieces that would go into this as a career field. So, but yeah, definitely the Grow Your Own is something that we should do.
Also, I noticed that you highlighted junior achievement at the elementary level, and I was just curious, is that going to be added as part of the curriculum, or is it still going to be on the volunteer basis? How's that going to be handled?
Well, one thing that is part of the long-range plan is to get more consistency between our elementary schools and what we're, and what we're doing at the different grade levels. So I started collecting from each of the three elementary schools what's happening at each grade level, and then bringing that to our elementary principals' meeting and, you know, talking about, and I have actually talked to them about it already, about, because they had to give me the information, and I showed them the information saying, you know, we are doing some different things at the three different elementary schools, so we definitely want to get more consistent with what we're doing when it comes to education for employment and doing that career awareness at the elementary level. So that is one of the long-range planning goals, is to become more consistent across our elementary schools in what we're doing.
It should be easier when there's just two elementaries. And also, JA has a really nice progression that's really tailored for each grade level all the way through. It's very nice.
Yeah, and what I, what I've noticed is it's not at the same grade levels at the elementary schools. And so, the first thing is to start talking about how we can get it consistent. That's the first step.
Yes. And lastly, thank you for talking about soft skills.
Yes, very important.
I noticed in your long-term, in the full plan, it talks about that we purchased the extension program within the Naviance so that we could have the national clearing, access to national clearinghouse. Is there any way we could get that data as a board of where all the students are attending college? Or where, oh, not even college, where they all seniors are attending? How many went on to secondary? How many went into straight into career, military versus in a apprenticeship or a two-year program?
I am thinking, when you look at PI 2604, one of the shells for the Board says that the review shall evaluate people post-secondary outcomes.
Right.
So we ought to get that.
In our, in our long-term planning, so Naviance has that ability, but we have to get kids' email addresses. And so we talked about that when we were developing this plan. So this plan's a five-year plan, and so one of those things is to find out what we need to do to gather that data. And one of the suggestions from the team was to use Naviance and what we need to do to gather that data. And so we talked about, I believe it was, we need to get email addresses, personal email addresses from students, so then that information can be sent out. Now, that doesn't guarantee we're going to get responses. You know, what we do, what we've had to do is actually through indicator 14 or 13 through IDEA, we actually have to, every, I think it's four years, we have to call students that had IEPs and graduated from our district. We've had to call them, and we've had to find out where they're at and collect that data that way. You know, I'm not so sure it's feasible to make all the calls for all of our graduates, but what we can do is we can get their personal email addresses before they leave, and then we can put that in our system, and then it automatically sends it out to them, and then we collect the data that way.
There was a time before Scott that Ken was able to get this data.
So I can talk to you about that. So years ago, National Student Clearinghouse, the state had a grant that made it free. It's like $500. And then, and then that went away, and some districts continue to pay $500. It was free, I think they did it for two or three years so you could get the data, because it will give you all the things, care that you're asking for. And the nice thing is, it's not, it's not self-reported data, but it's $500. But this past year, we did pay the money to get that data for the Board. I talked to Kelly last week, Cara, a week before, I think it was last week? She was down? Okay. He talked to Kelly Reek, Kelly Reek in the counseling office. And, and we have, Nikki Donnelly was the contact with Naviance, and we still haven't had that data downloaded. We have it from like 2012, 2013, but we haven't had it. We have to upload all of our data. And what happens with student clearinghouses is every student is given a unique number, and there's like 99% of the colleges and universities across the nation that then collect that data. So it's pretty accurate, and it'll actually show us percentage of our students who leave and go to a four-year versus a two-year versus work, and then how many of those kids go back to the same college or university, how many of them drop out, how many of them graduate in four years, how many graduate in five, how many graduate in six, all those pieces. And so, and the formula is five years, you have five years to graduate to be on time, just so for the indicator, that's what you would look at. So we're trying to get that data for the Board, because we can get it from Naviance, but the problem is it's self-reported. So I could say, I went to Yale, even though I didn't. Or, you know, they may just say, I went, and they may not even intentionally be saying something, they may say, I went to Milwaukee and they got a different offer, they got more scholarship money to go somewhere else, so they went to Montana State. I mean, you know, anything you want, because when they report in May, that may change over the summer for certain kids, they may be undecided. So we just don't have that input. We paid the money for it, we reached out to them, Kelly reached out to them again, and we'll be able to get that for you. Once we have it, we'll be able to get that for the Board, so you can have some longitudinal data. I mean, it's really great data to look at.
And the establishment of these goals, is this new as a result of PI 26?
The long-range planning goals?
Yes.
Well, this is what we came up with as a team of, this is where we're at right now through the plan, and then these are goals we want to continue to work on over five years.
But were a similar set of goals established five years ago when we prepared our E for E?
So-
Plan?
Five years ago, our education for employment plan was a page.
Okay.
So it's much more extensive now due to the requirements of academic and career planning. So really, education for employment expanded to include academic career planning, and so therefore, our long-range planning became more extensive as well.
But we need to then establish a mechanism to regularly check our progress against these goals.
Correct.
You know, so, so expanding our business and community partnerships, how many do we have now, and how many do we want to have five years from now? Because then we can uphold our end of the bargain by completing the shells.
How many current students do we have that do apprenticeships?
I do not know that number, but I can get it for you.
I was curious. Is it only through the U of L? Is that the only avenue they have? You're looking at me, that guy.
I can tell you through youth apprenticeship, we have about eight to 12.
That's just with John Higgins through, and there might be others that they are reaching out through various industries?
I'm not sure. I just know what gets reported to me for the C tiers.
Yeah, so many other industries that aren't covered in that that we could find out for you. The counseling office would be the ones that we really know, even Scott would know.
I can tell you, as an employer in that largest segment in the state of Wisconsin, this is a huge challenge. And we've reached out to the area high schools where I work and have not heard a peep from them in two years. In fact, one of the schools wouldn't allow us to put help-wanted signs up on their bulletin board, because it was just not the direction that they saw that they wanted their students to go. And it's, it's, it's just a huge challenge, absolutely huge challenge.
We're fortunate that Pam came with the Chamber of Commerce, also partners with us for a lot of these pieces, so it isn't just falling just on the school system as well. So we do have some, Ms. Schilling, her first name escapes me. I can tell you what her name is, because she seemed like, Kathleen Schilling, for the Ozaki Economic Development Advisory Council. She reached out to me today to look at possibly giving feedback on that. There's two days I'm looking at, so I'll check my calendar, I haven't responded to her. But we are fortunate to have industry wanting to help us, and we have staff and opportunities to be able to reach out to them as well. So, do you need a motion? It's been a long time since we made that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Julia, you want to circle back your policy?
Sure. Okay, so we are looking at policy 446.1 on student search activities. As I mentioned earlier, we discussed it for the second time on July 10th, and we reviewed the recommended policy wording from WASB as well as NOLA, and decided to go mostly with the WASB policy with just a few minor wording changes and additions, which are highlighted on your copy of the policy. Mostly, or the first thing that we wanted to do is clarify who is able to conduct student searches. That's why some of the wording changed at the beginning. And then, we also wanted to standardize the language regarding the school resource officer, which I see has been standardized.
If that was where it was either police liaison officer, school resource officer, different districts, so we spoke with Mr. Mantai, I spoke with Mr. Mantai, and the police department refers to it as school resource, so that's, we use that as our official title.
Does anybody have any questions about this, or?
So let's get a motion on the table to approve.
Make that motion?
Any further questions or discussion? Julia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Overnight trip requests?
Yes, we have two different overnight trip requests, one for student council at the high school. It's their student council retreat on August 13th and 14th. So there are eight students attending is what they're planning on. You can see some of the students, we have both a male and a female chaperone that will be going along with that. And they go to West Bend for that retreat. So we would ask that the Board approve the student council one, as well as the Oshkosh tournament for girls volleyball, which is on the 22nd and 23rd. And you can see that we also have male and female coaches going along as well for that tournament.
Motion for that?
So moved.
Any questions for Jeff about those trips? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. And Jamie is in position to give us construction of this. Are you going to kick that off, Jeff?
Yeah, I will. So we have multiple things going on that we want to make sure the Board is aware of, because they'll be starting in the next two weeks, so, or in the next, probably starting on Monday.
Correct.
Starting on Monday at the high school. So maybe that's a different one.
It's going to be starting soon and ending right before registration. Now, once we get this thing up, Jamie will know what I'm talking about. There's multiple things that we want to update you on tonight, because the next time that we come together, school has started, and we want to make sure our community also is aware of the various pieces that are going to be happening in a more accelerated timeline. So one of the things we'll talk about is the staging, and what that's going to look like at each, at each building, as well as some of the hazardous material updating that's going to be happening. So in order to make sure we get everything accomplished by the 18, 19 school year, there are things that are going to occur in advance of the school year starting, as well as over extended breaks, or even like an extended weekend. And it could be happening at John Long, it could be happening at Kennedy, it could be happening at Woodview. We're going to be focusing on the high school for the most part, but there'll be certain areas, like the custodial area here, where they're going to be removing flooring in there and abatements for that, as well as down this hallway here, that will have a different type of flooring that goes into it. So they'll be removing that, and then as well, the, heading out of the locker room, because they'll be adding on to the new gym, and so they'll be taking that out in here. So you can see as people come in to go to registration down here, the floor will, it'll just be, it's not going to be polished concrete, it's going to be just ugly concrete, because we're going to have to pull the tiles up, and we have to be able to close those areas off to be able to get rid of the hazardous material. So that's going to be happening. When does that start?
So, so I worked with Scott this morning, and after talking to administrators last week, I need to change some timelines. So, right now, Area 1 is, that happened today. So if you walk down through the cafeteria, you will be able to see the plastic and the signs. So that will be completed this week, this entire week, they're going to be at the high school. So that, tomorrow, they're going to start Area 2, and, and then move up to the second floor, and also some of the mechanical rooms, Wednesday and Thursday. The only thing they have to come back for would be the chiller-boiler plant, which is Area 4, and that will be August 7th. So basically, in the next two weeks, they're going to be removing hazardous material.
So that'll be done at the high school before registration time?
Correct.
Right? And then at John Long, then your next one's John Long.
Yeah, John Long, there again, after, after working with Cara and summer school, we moved that to August 4th. So that is after summer.
So, right now, Area 1 is, that happened today, so if you walk down through the cafeteria, you will be able to see the plastic and the signs. So that will be completed this week, this entire week, they're going to be at the high school. So that, tomorrow, they're going to start Area 2, and, and then move up to the second floor, and also some of the mechanical rooms, Wednesday and Thursday. The only thing they have to come back for would be the chiller-boiler plant, which is Area 4, and that will be August 7th. So basically, in the next two weeks, they're going to be removing hazardous material.
So that'll be done at the high school before registration?
Correct.
Right? And then at John Long, then here next month is John Long.
Yeah, John Long, there again, after, after working with Cara and summer school, we moved that to August 4th. So that is after summer school. They will be doing some hazardous material in mechanical rooms.
So on Friday, during our administrative retreat, I spent two hours looking at this topic and trying to think, foreshadowing of different issues that could come up. Obviously, it's still developing as we look at that, but trying to, because those areas have to be closed off. Only Jamie is able to go in there because he's certified.
That's correct.
And, so it'll be closed off to keep it safe and everything else for everyone involved. But that, that's helping us be able to, you know, have a completed project, and there may be things that come along that we're going to have to do before the end of the school year. We're still working with Hoffman of what that looks like, and when that gets finalized, we'll bring that, or come at the owners' meeting, or whatever may come out, we'll make sure we inform people of that as well. So, so that'll be occurring shortly. And then, looking at, yep, yep, so then, so this is a big, this hasn't been finalized, but we want to get this out there, because this is going to be coming very quickly. We, Topher, Scott and, and Jamie have worked closely with Hoffman on this, they've had multiple discussions about this, if you can make this figure, we just have to, we just have to keep moving it around. There we go. Bring me, bring me this one, please. So we start at the parking lot. They'll, they need, they need a, they need a staging area for con, for staging area and contractor parking. I think you said there's going to be like, you were between 60 to 75 people on the site at one time.
Just contractors, yes.
Just contractors. They're looking at, at using this space for them to be able to utilize, and you can see they put their trailers there, so you get an idea of what that looks like, which then results in all traffic coming in, Cheyenne coming in, and then going out. So that means we're looking at losing a lot of space over here. Scott's working to figure out, can we just have seniors park over here, and then we have juniors park in the, in the, in the lot over here? Hoffman is also going to be using this as a staging area, so they'll be taking that part of the parking lot as well. So, we may not have room for sophomores this year, it may be out of lottery for sophomores. That'll be the, a separate piece. Once again, it's one of those nice to have, but not necessary to have. Jamie's going to block off in a certain color, the certain parking lot, so that we have room for staff at GES, because students will already be parked by the time staff comes for GES, as well as when parents were to come in to drop off. So it won't affect pickup or drop off at GES, but there will be less parking for parents who want to park and wait to come in to pick up their kids. There will be this whole thing, you can see we're losing parking spots now, we're bringing over more students, so some of those pieces. It is not affecting, you can see the playground area for GES, it isn't affecting that, there'll be a fence on the outside, though. There will be a gate for people to be able to still use this, be able to go to the football field that goes with that, and to come back this way, Cara, and then bring it down, please. So, you see here, there's a, they're blocking off a lot of this, so that there isn't an opportunity for parents to drop off, so that's going to be a different type of drop off for parents, as well as, you can see we're losing, I think it's 30 yards of the practice football field. So, that's, because they're staging that for the gym. We know that, even though we won't be having Stockholm soccer games, we still, it's not reasonable to expect people to park here, and they're going to walk all the way around here to get to the football field, so we know we're going to need, we know we're going to need a path, so even though it looks like it's right next to the trees, we're going to need a path with lights for people to be able to do that and use that effectively. But we, Hoffman is going to have fencing up before school begins, so we're going to, even though construction won't be going on at that point, people will just be used to, this is what it's going to look like as I come in. Staff, we worked with principals to say that during their orientation time at each building, they're going to do a fire alarm to staff, so that staff are also getting used, so there'll be certain exit points that we're used to using that we aren't going to be able to use, so that if we were to have an emergency or to have an issue, that staff know exactly what to do at each building, that we'd go into, because really, all four buildings are being affected in some way, shape, form. John Long won't be affected to an extreme at all, but to a minor extent. But we want to have everyone do that even before the school year begins, so that when school starts, if there is an issue, people know how to respond for that. So that sort of shows you the high school.
Can I ask you a question?
You can.
Just looking at the fencing, I know it's right on the border of the swings and stuff, but I noticed it cuts off, like, right now, those kids have the black top space where they, so will they be like trapped in there and they lose a, because they were going over further, and there was like little where you shoot, and it comes right back out, basketball area for them?
They will be trapped.
Well, I see what the fence goes right...
But we won't let them, well, we won't let them out. Yeah, that's a, that's what we're trying to figure out, is how, how, how to scale, how to scale are some of those pieces, this sort of art discussion that we had with that.
Yeah, we need to finalize it, and, and part of that, too, they will work with us on high-traffic at times to, you know, when we have after-order events, and also probably resets. So we will have to notify them of that.
Yeah, because our concern was, when we first saw it, I was like, wow, are they not going to be able to go outside? Is it going to go, because it can't go this way? And so, yeah, so they still have that, will it be a little bit smaller space? Yes, and you're going to see that at each site. So if we go to GES, I'm sorry, ADS.
No, no impact to the JV baseball field?
Well, now, tomorrow, I am, I am meeting with Kevin Moore, because if we are losing 30 yards at the practice field, we're probably going to lay out the new practice field on the JV outfield.
So up there, and that's what we're assuming, that, that we would have them hold off on dumping dirt anyways, but they'd be able to use part of that piece for them to be able to have some kind of green space. So, looking at, this is a little harder to see, but you can see in the, there, you can see the red that's coming here, we're having to add an egress in one of our classrooms, so they're adding an egress, because this is an egress here, and now with the addition going on, as soon as they start that, then there needs to be, kids can't go back out there, so there's an egress that's going to be added, that will be lighted with the lights, and we worked with the village on this, and they'll go with that, but that'll be, so there'll be an egress for them that comes outside of that, but then there'll be a, they'll be blocked off here, all the way along to part of the current football field here, and up to the back area there, that goes with that. So, you can see they've sort of shown the designated parking space and so forth, but it's blocked off all the way up to the top as well, and Hoffman using one of their trailers right in that courtyard area for that. So there's obviously working to say how our students will get outside to the playground area, to the green space, those types of things, are the things that we're working through with them that goes with that. You can see you're losing green space and light-off space as well. And then, last, is the Woodview site plan fence thing? So with you, you can see that they are looking to fence off the part where we currently have basketball hoops here, so where kids right now are, that's where you start your day, is on that area there, so that is going to be started, because they're going to be building immediately onto that side of the building, that's where the construction's going. So that, that becomes involved, as well as the front part, all the way around to the back area where the playground area is now. So the back area isn't touched, but the, definitely the side here, as well as the front area there, where they'll be adding on during the parking, during the gym, all those pieces. So, you know, this is, this is what we've seen, we'll be talking to Hoffman again on Wednesday, next Wednesday, at our, at our owners' meeting, but we just saw this on Friday, as admin team talking about it, looking through, what does this mean? What does that mean for this, for egress, for evacuation drills, for kids to play, for parents, those types of things, and we just wanted to update the board about where we are, as well as our community, that they can see this as well, and once it goes finalized, then we'll be able to, as long as we, as long as we get the scale, because there's still some push and pull on some of the things that are needs versus wants, and what they need versus what they want. We're trying to minimize the impact that we have on our students, but we realize that it's just going to be a need to be a flexible year, in order to have brand-new classrooms, in order to have a gym, those are the pieces that we're going to need to be able to quickly happen, so it will affect us in the short term. So that's, that's one piece of the construction update that went into it. We also wanted to update you on summer projects that we, so, you know, regardless of the construction updates, there are things, you heard a couple of them with the tuck pointing, and the other piece, but I'll, Jamie, walk us through it, he gave us an update as an end of the...
Just updating that, we're still moving, moving forward with, with our normal maintenance and safety checks, and, and like Topher said, today, we finished up tuck pointing at John Long Middle School. Both of the gymnasiums at John Long Middle School are to be resurfaced August 4th, after summer school is finished, and basically, the next two and a half weeks, district-wide, we are going to be testing all of the fire systems, so we will work with staff on that. And fire curtains in auditorium, all of the fire doors will be inspected. I mentioned this once before, Melissa Stoudt and I work together, do a clean sweep with chemicals, that was done, and I put that out for bid. And then the high school, we are going to be, it is closed down right now, the next two weeks, we're going to be refinishing that gymnasium floor, including repainting the logo, adding orange to the logo. And just to finish up, we are preventing maintenance throughout the district on all of our air handling units this time.
And one of the other things we talked about as, at our admin retreat, too, is having two days for staff as they come back, so as they start looking at their curriculum for this current year, as they start looking at that thinking ahead to the next year, and are there things that I've just kept that we don't use anymore? If it's curriculum, Cara's going to be sending, no doubt, to everyone on different guidelines. If curriculum is over seven years, is what you said? Curriculum's over seven years old, then there is no resale value to it. If it's less than that, then there is no opportunity for us to resale it, but if we're not using it, if you're not using supplemental materials, a lot of times you get, you're on a committee, you get multiple publishers sending you stuff, and you keep it, because you don't know when you'll ever use it. If you haven't used it, at the beginning of the year, that might be a good time to throw it away, so that at the end of the year, there is less to do with that. So, we're going to have two days leading up to the sneak peeks, where Jamie's going to make sure his custodial crew is ready, so they'll be put up in the hallway, and they'll be cleaning that out for them right away at the beginning of the year. We might do that again later in the year, we'll, we'll work with staff to see what more needs to be done as they're going through things, and, and just thinking ahead to what 18, 19's going to look like, and what's fresh in their minds, and looking at it and so forth. So, that was something else that we discussed also.
Just on the fencing and things, portable restroom location, probably want to make sure we understand where that's going to be, and then internal signage, to the extent that we're changing, because I'm assuming the athletic entrance is changing.
Yes.
So we'll need to have internal signage to direct people back to where they need to go.
Correct. And, and part of that update will be a floor plan, any changes, we will have a weekly update on that.
Yep, we see that, just need to make sure.
Isn't Hoffman going to help us with some of that signage?
A lot, yes, they, yep, they, that's...
Is the internal stuff, too?
Yes, they will help us with that as well, yeah.
Part of the project cost?
It is, yes, it is, yeah.
Even at the end, with, with all the new redesign configuration, we have to have new egress, new, new classroom numbers, I mean, basically, everything.
Exits, as we've added different exits now, that we have to make sure those are sequential, so as we give the map, and EMC, I'm sure will work with us on that, is coming up with the, the plan for the police and fire to know exactly which exit, emergency exit, that's all standardized across our district that goes with that.
That's it?
So that's it, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie or Jeff on construction items? Okay, the board will convene in close session to consider, one, employment and compensation of administrators over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and, two, performance-related data of the superintendent over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State statute 1985-1C. Do we have a motion to that?
So moved.
Yes.
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 And yes.